Being held in fashion as is allowed under state legislation. We are also conducting a public hearing on two ordinance revisions. While one is an ordinance revision, the other is a new ordinance. So first order of business is pledge allegiance to Charles.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which extends one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Thank you, Charles. The public hearing has been noticed and I'll just leave. The notice here by given, we're selecting a whole hearing on 18th June 22 at 8:30 AM at the Guilford Town Hall and by Zoom. The purpose of this hearing is to obtain full comment and consider it an enactment of an ordinance to amend the code of the town of Guilford, Chapter 208 Noise, and an ordinance to regulate all terrain vehicles, ATVs, and copies of the proposed ordinance amendments on my file available in the town clerk's office. All interested persons are invited to attend and be heard. Communications will be received for intriguing into the record. To date, we've only received one. That was from the Conservation Commission. And then the notice is published pursuant to Section 3-48 of the Charter of the Town. With that, let's open up the first of the two being the chapter to await the noise ordinance. As I think you may recall, we went through this routine several months ago. And based on the reaction, it's a feedback we got from staff as well as the community. We have redefined what we were looking to change. And what you have, the summary shows that the three basic changes. And this is in the exemptions side. Noise generated by any construction equipment operated during daytime hours, except no such exemption shall apply after 7:00 PM on Saturdays and Sundays. Noise generated by construction equipment during nighttime hours and after 7:00 PM on Saturdays and Sundays shall not exceed maximum noise levels as specified in 208-5B. And number three, noise domestic power equipment such as, and not limited to, power saws, sanders, grinders, lawn, garden tools, places operated during daytime hours, except no exemption shall apply after 7:00 PM on Saturdays and Sundays. Five, noise of demolition work conducted during daytime hours, except no such exemption shall apply after 7:00 PM on Saturdays and Sundays. Considered emergency work demolition shall be exempted at all times in the noise level set in this regulation. Pete, if you wouldn't mind commenting briefly on what was changed since the last time we talked about this?
Yeah, I think it was a much broader attempt at amendment last time. So this is a much more focused. This came, as you know, Matt, this came out of the first selectman's office and basically was initiated, as I understand, from a complaint about construction noise on the weekends. So this is really what we're trying to address in this. The construction, domestic power equipment and demolition work were completely exempt prior to this from any noise ordinance during daylight hours. And so rather than make them completely exempt, we've and that exemption ended at 10:00 PM at night, including on the weekends. So all this does is say, well, you, that type of noise will continue to have the exemption, but that exemption ends at 7:00 PM on Saturdays and Sundays. Now, that doesn't mean that type of work or noise can't be generated or just have to comply with the same noise restrictions as any other type of of noise.
Thank you, Pete. Any comments or questions from board members?
Yeah, I do have one. So is it a correct interpretation that people can't mow their lawns past 7:00 PM on the weekends?
No, it's not.
Explain that to me, please.
All right, so the noise, well, I guess it depends on the amount of noise that's generated, right? So if it were to violate the daytime noise levels that's in the ordinance, then yes, technically, then it would. That's correct. But I don't really have that full understanding of what level of noise is generated. By lawnmowers.
By lawnmowers, right. So I just, forgive me, I don't really know how many decibels my lawnmower puts out, but I just would like to have assurance that people can still do normal yard work. You know, people who work all week and are busy and might need those extra couple hours to mow their lawns. I want to feel comfortable that people can still continue to do that.
Okay, understood. You know, chief, are you on? Maybe you could comment on whether a lawnmower would, you know, would violate the noise ordinance. I'm not familiar enough with the decibel levels, frankly.
Right, and I don't think it would, but the difficulty there is measuring how that's, how those decibels are supposed to be measured. That's a piece of equipment that's moving, it's not standing still. So, you know, the decibel levels as it moves across the yard get louder or much less depending on where it is in the yard, based on the distance away from the people that are hearing it. So it should not be an issue with the decibel levels.
Well, if there's any doubt at all, I would like to see that somehow accepted from the exception to the exception here.
All right, so let me, let me, yeah, so let me throw this out there then. And I don't advocate for these, I just draft them.
Yeah, understand.
I have no problem. So the, for instance, if you look at the language in there, you could say, all right, no domestic power equipment is going to be affected and just leave that the way it's been, enjoying the exemption completely till 10:00. Or you can say this amendment still applies to power saws, sanders, grinders, but take out the lawn and garden tools, just as an option. Or, you know, we can remove the entire change with respect to domestic power equipment. So I'll leave that to you folks.
Okay, all right.
Anything further, Sue?
Um, yeah, I don't know at what point we would discuss how to do that, but yes, I'd like to do one of those things.
Okay, we will have the opportunity later in the agenda when we go to act on it.
Okay, perfect.
Anyone from the public wishing to opine on this ordinance? All right, hearing none, let's move on to the second. And that is an ordinance to regulate all terrain vehicles, ATVs. And this is something that I think has generated a significant amount of discussion and attention with the Guilford Land Conservation Trust as well as Conservation Commission. And Janet Ainsworth, thank you for the letter that you sent along supporting the adoption of this ordinance. I also know Kevin McGee has been supportive of this type of activity. And it's largely, I think, around the fact that it's very difficult to regulate the illegal use of ATVs, particularly on land conservation trust property. If I'm not mistaken, it creates some damage and it is a public nuisance as well. Would either Kevin or Sarah want to comment on that?
Well, Janet, she wants for conservation before I jump in first, sir. This is Spencer Meyer from the Land Trust. I'm here too, and it's my turn.
Oh, Spencer, okay, yeah, I didn't recognize the telephone number.
Is now a good time?
Yes, it's very appropriate.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And I'm sorry for the not great connection that doesn't support video, but some of you know what I look like. Anyway, yeah, I'm the president of the Guilford Land Conservation Trust. My colleague Sarah is in the audience, I believe, as well. And as you did already allude to, we are very much in favor of this ordinance. We have had continual problems with ATVs and other motorized vehicles on our various properties, particularly in North Guilford. And we think this ordinance is really great and is going to help. I would point out one thing that Kevin McGee has already brought up, I believe. And that is, we do have problems with some vehicles that are so-called street legal, but also are four-by-fours, like pickup trucks and Jeeps and things like that that are part of our problem as well. And it's not clear to me if this ordinance explicitly would apply to those kinds of vehicles, at least in our case, on private land. So we would be interested in having the language expanded a little bit to include vehicles that are otherwise registered, but should not be allowed on private land without written permission. With that caveat aside, we are very much in support of this ordinance and we thank you for bringing it up.
All right, welcome, Spencer. Spencer, in the definitions section of the ordinance, I don't know if this addresses your concern. It's all terrain vehicles means a self-propelled vehicle designed to travel over unimproved terrains defined in Connecticut general statutes 14379, which has been determined by the commissioner of motor vehicles to be unsuitable for operational public highway. So that probably doesn't cover it, right?
I think, correct, I think that's right. And, you know, a regular sort of pickup truck that the state would consider very much okay on highways, also at times are violating, are trespassing on our land and, you know, Jeeps and things like that. And so I don't know the right way to write it, but somehow, at least in the private land section, saying some other classes also are required to have written permission from the private landowner before being used.
Well, if I can jump in here for a moment, this is attorney Thomas Koo, so.
Thank you.
With Suss and Duffy. Just, this ordinance is largely drawn from the enabling statute under Connecticut general statutes, which allows the local town to regulate the use of ATVs and other sort of thing. As far as it doesn't necessarily empower you to, if you say whether you want to expand this reg or possibly do a different reg with regard to, if you say, Jeeps, four-by, you know, basically pickup trucks, that sort of thing. This ordinance is primarily drawn, allowing you to pull in directly from the state statute. As far as, so if you say, as far as the definition, that is really coming from the Connecticut general statute. So how, as you say, I understand there's an issue. I mean, I believe there is another ordinance. I don't have my notes in front of me dealing with, basically, with you saying, you're not allowed to drive vehicles in undesignated areas with regard to like parks and such. I, again, I'd have to check my notes to see exactly what ordinance that was. But as you say, how, I understand the problem, but how do you go about getting there? I honestly have to put some more thought, or as you say, whatever the board wishes to, whatever angle the board wishes to pursue or whatever idea Peter might have.
Hey, thank you, Tom. So those of you who have met Tom before is with Suss and Duffy. It's a firm that I'm associated with, and he did the draft. We use the North Branford model as a template and worked off of that and made some modifications as we thought were appropriate. And it came to us as a request for, actually, to try to adopt the North Branford model. So that's why we stayed so close to it. But I think Tom's point is, is well taken that, you know, I don't think we want to expand this ordinance to try to reach registered motor vehicles. I think it complicates it. Now, maybe we can do something else under a different section or a new section of our town code. I'd be curious to see what the chief thinks of it. However, I think maybe the idea is past this, if you're so inclined, to address the immediate ATV issue. Obviously, somebody driving a pickup truck or any other vehicle on property without permission is trespassing already. So anyway, you know, I'd invite the chief, if he's on, to comment if he'd like.
I think with the registered vehicles, we have a little bit more ability to identify people because it's got a license plate on it. We can identify who owns it, where it comes from, makes it a little bit easier. I think, like Pete said, this is, this is for, I think, more directed toward all of those vehicles that don't, we don't have that ability. People that are riding ATVs or dirt bikes that have no license plates, they're very hard to identify other than by color or make of the vehicle. And maybe something separate later on with a registered vehicle, because we have other things through the Connecticut statutes that we can charge people with for registered vehicles that don't apply to unregistered vehicles or vehicles that are unable to register.
Is there any, I mean, this ordinance spells out some specific fines. Is there any reason why, I can appreciate with license plates, they're easier to identify, but once you've identified them, is there any reason why these fines can't be applied to a registered vehicle? I mean, the ordinance proposed here says motorized recreational vehicle. I mean, that could be a Jeep.
Right, but it's, as it refers to that recreational vehicle, as it refers back to the Connecticut statute, it does not include the registered vehicle.
Right.
It would have to be either added here or, as Pete said, maybe separate.
So are the, are the potential, I mean, once you've identified somebody in a registered vehicle on posted property where they are trespassing, are the potential penalties equal to less than or greater than what we're proposing here for recreational vehicles?
I think the penalties here are going to be greater on this ordinance.
Okay.
Initially, I mean, because I still, you could still add trespassing and those kinds of things to somebody who's unregistered as well.
I know, I just, you know, you suggested that registered vehicle would be easier to identify, but it is almost going to push people with Jeeps.
Well, and to that point, we're working against millions of dollars worth of advertising. Every four-wheel-drive vehicle commercial has them covered in mud and then going to like a gala 10 minutes later. So people think that's what's going on. So that's sort of number one. Number two is, I presume, this is Kevin, I presume everything's posted already, entrances and parking libraries are all posted.
We have signs around all the areas saying, pretty clear with 12 by 18, it's signs with all the rules and regulations on our properties. And the similar is the same thing with the land trust properties. We also have signage where no ATVs, signs that all the trail entrances, a picture of ATV with slash through it on top of it. So it's pretty well posted a lot of our locations there. You're not supposed to be utilizing it. Problem is, they know, as the chiefs indicate, that the police department, well, police department's not out there, they can't chase. So they know they can pretty much go through and have fun there. Cameras, you have the ability to get pictures, but then you have to locate where they end up at the end to do enforcement of those ATVs there. Actually, why don't I just read my statement then?
Can I, can I, before, one more question before you get to? Just to take the other side for a brief moment. Is there any place in any of the town property or the land trust property that is authorized for these? I mean, the folks who have these, can they say, okay, at least I got this one location, go kick up some mud? Pretty much in the town, any public town-owned property or land trust property, this equipment is banned. So anybody that has one should know, is my point.
Yeah, all our open space properties in towns is, a lot of it's based on our grants and stuff like that, don't allow ATVs and all those stuff, activities on our properties.
So the motorized vehicles as defined here are banned and everybody should know that.
Correct, and we noticed all that there. But, yeah, there's nothing, I'm aware, that they can go on to town properties and stuff like that. The option for them is for them, like other corporate-type things around, is getting in on a large landowner or farmer, something like that, and utilizing, get permission from, permission from that person to utilize that farm or something like that, large piece of property for them to utilize. But the town pieces or open space are, our definitions of some of the classifications don't allow for that. And also by our town ordinance, doesn't allow our open space or parks, properties for these vehicles to be in as part of our town ordinance, Chapter 214, parts of public places there.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Governor, your statement?
Yeah, so you alluded to the Conservation Commission has their statement to read in here. At the Conservation Commission, February 23, 2022 meeting, the commission voted to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that the town of Guilford adopt an ATV ordinance. Similar to that was approved by the town of North Branford. The commission feels that the regulation would help reduce ATV activity occurring in the town's open space and provides better fine system than currently in place at Guilford Conservation. Guilford Land Conservation Trust is in favor of the ordinance and had written a letter of support to North Branford when they recently had a public hearing and they attached a copy of the regulations for North Madison, excuse me, North Branford and the state regulation. My statement is, I'm in favor of the ATV ordinance. There has been issues with ATVs on, at the open space properties. ATV activity has been observed at the W. Preserve, which is off of West Street in town, and with ATVs entering the property from North Branford. We promised the Jane Valley and our Hubert Preserve with ATVs coming from adjacent properties and from the town of Durham, Braymore Preserve, where we actually had a documented pickup truck, which was caught on trail camera, which left trail ruts along the whole length of a trail system through there, through the mud. Our Timberlands and East River Reserve have had some ATV problems as much as the northern properties. However, about a year or so ago, we had a minor operating a dirt bike at the East River Reserve, which was finally caught after he crashed his dirt bike and attacked a stone and required medical care. As indicated by Spencer, one concern I have with the ordinance, it doesn't cover registered motor vehicles such as the full-drive vehicles and the registered ATVs such as dirt bikes. The town's parks and places ordinance should be updated to reflect the similar fines for these vehicles. The Zixon ordinance provides fines of more than $50 and a maximum of $90 each reaching fraction here. This is probably an ordinance that's been in place probably since 70s or whatever. It hasn't really been looked at in a while in terms of those fine systems there.
I guess you've addressed all my questions. I mean, the two examples started to give were the truck and the motorbike, which this doesn't address. Pete, would it be, is it easier to just go address the other ordinances Kevin suggests? Or can we simply add motorized recreational vehicles, registered or not registered? You know, what's the best way legally to attack this issue?
I mean, I think it, as the council recommended and chief recommended, we put what's in front of us and then look at approving the parks and recreation ordinance that's based off of probably two states enabling that.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to 50, $90 fines, these are $1,000 fines. Wish everybody to trucks and motorcycles.
I would concur with that, that, you know, this came to us as ATV legislation being proposed. So that's what, how we've reviewed it. I'd be reluctant without doing a deeper dive to see if we could extend it to registered motor vehicles. Those, by the way, you know, that trespass, remember too, is a criminal offense. So that's, that's a little, you know, more significant than just a low fine that goes to court, that one.
Yeah, but that's the point, it goes into litigation where these are spelled out. I mean, first offense, second arrest, third offense.
Yep.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I think, Pete, I think that suggestion's good. I had one concern. The original intent here was, not original intent, but the purpose rather, was the, to regulate the operation of, use of pocket bikes, dirt bikes, all terrain vehicles and other similar goods on all public property and private property within the town of Guilford. There is clarification under 3C on private property, which still allows folks who want to use ATVs on their own property are able to do so. And that caveat is, no person shall operate or cause it operated, any motorized recreational vehicle upon, within the limits of any private property within the town of Guilford, without first obtaining the written permission of the property owner or owners. Written permission shall not be required if the operator, passenger or owner of motorized recreational vehicle is also the owner of the real property upon which such vehicles being used. So that's a catch personal property rights. As long as they're not filing a noise ordinance. Thanks for bundling those together, Pete. The tree falls in the forest, sometimes, who can hear? And any other comments from the public or?
Matt, Gary McKelley here.
I would, I would just point out that the town, through its taxpayers and land trust through its donors, has invested substantial amounts of money in creating open space and allowing for passive enjoyment of that open space. And the, these vehicles degrade the space that we purchased and hamper the enjoyment of the property for which, for which purpose it was purchased.
Thank you, Gary. Do you have someone in the room?
Yeah, Frank Farrell, I'm a member of the Land Trust and on the Board of Advisors currently. My, I have a witness. My, my comments are along the same lines as many of the others, but I wanted to, the way I read this ordinance, and I'm not familiar with the state law, but as far as the, the way this ordinance is written, it seemed to me there needs to be a distinction between conserved land and streets, for example, if everything seemed to be lumped into public property, including the land trust and town-owned conserving, along with streets and everything else where you can drive. So one way of altering this would be to draw a distinction there between the town properties, like the East River Preserve and land trust properties. Because the way, the way you read it, you could drive a pickup truck onto land trust is the way I read it, onto land trust property. But additionally, land trust is considered, is private property used in a public manner. So that's another confusion that enters with the public, I think. They tend to regard that property as public property when, when really its use is governed by the land trust, which is all. Anyway, that's, I've now also had concerns about agricultural equipment and stuff that also needs to be regulated. If you go with the way this is, with this ordinance, it needs to be included, pickup trucks and Jeeps and such.
Which we will deal with in a, in a separate manner at this point. Seems to be the consensus right now. Anyone else? No? Well, thank you for your input and conversation. With that, I will close the public hearing and move on to our regular agenda. Item 3, public forum. Public forum. Anyone wishing to address a public forum? And just to clarify for the record, I've had conversations with both Jeff and Mark about the initial length of presentations, given the sensitive nature of this, of the topic that they want to talk about. I suggest that we take a little longer, that we're not going to restrict it.
Good morning. My name is Jeffrey Hocking. I'm a lifelong resident of Guilford and a 32-year veteran of the Guilford Police Department, retiring in 2012. I'm speaking on my behalf and also the retirees listed at the bottom of the comments. The COLA language was added to the contract in 1987 pursuant to a state labor board binding arbitration award. This was not, as has been characterized over the years by many committee members and town officials, a give-and-take negotiated item. It was, in fact, the arbitration board agreeing with the union position on this issue. The union position was this, the town didn't want to be locked into a specific annual COLA amount, so the union proposed in every two-year review, where the town could adjust the COLA amount according to economic conditions. Not a yes or no matter, as it has morphed into since 2008. The spirit of this language is evidenced by the COLA awards for the 20 years that followed, 1988 to 2008. Only once was the same COLA percentage awarded in back-to-back cycles. We would ask that the town follow the arbitration award, or the COLA percentage to be determined by the board based on actual, or actuarial recommendations. Many of the denials since 2008 were for what was characterized as poor economic conditions and budget uncertainty. The fact is that since 2008, the town has enjoyed budget surpluses totaling over $12 million. A recent example is in the spring of 2020, when the Board of Selectmen denied a COLA due to budget uncertainty. Two months later, the town closed the fiscal year with a $2.2 million surplus. Another reason for denials was that the pension fund was not funded at a high enough level to support the COLA. Another reason for denials was that the pension fund was not funded at a high enough level to support the cola. The fact is that the town has intentionally underfunded its actuarial. Recommended contributions over the years, just one example. Is evidenced in the twenty-ten pension committee minutes during the cola discussion in which a board member points out. That the town is only funding five hundred thousand of a one-million-dollar obligation. We funded our portion one hundred percent every week from our paycheck for decades. To deny a cola based on underfunding, which you created is not right nor fair. At the recent six fifteen twenty-two pension committee meeting, it was stated that. Colas appear to be not very, not be very common based on the actuary spreadsheet showing only five police departments with colas. We have data showing forty-one police agencies with colas supporting the argument that they are in fact, very common in law enforcement. Twenty-seven of those agencies are part of the MERS system, it's a state system, which gave you two-point-five percent cola for the last ten years. And just recently announced a six percent cola for this year due to inflation. At the same six fifteen twenty-two pension committee meeting during discussion of not giving us a cola. It was suggested that if we, the police retirees were not disabled, we could go get another job to supplement our pension. That's quite a thank you for decades of risking our lives. Although the cola review language is only in the police contract, Mitch Goldblatt and Matt Hawey have said over the years that it is only fair. To give it to everyone. Considering we're a high-risk job, working nights, weekends, holidays, natural disasters, crime scenes, et cetera, away from our families. We do not feel it is fair to characterize us all the same. In the mid nineteen eighties, when the first selectman's life was threatened. It was not a secretary cafeteria worker or other town employee. Set to confront the drunk, angry shotgun-toting suspect, it was us. The brave men and women of the Guilford Police Department. We also contribute the highest percentage, now eight percent of our pay towards the pension. Town employees only three percent and school employees contribute nothing. From an economic standpoint, has been, as has been many times used as a reason for denial. It does not make fiscal sense to award a cola to a hundred and sixty-three retirees. When you were only obligated to award it to fifty-one retirees. It's been fourteen long years since a cola was awarded to us and now with inflation at a forty-one-year-high. And reports that is costing families an extra five hundred dollars a month. We ask that you please award the men and women, retired men and women of Guilford Police Department a cola. Uh, signed by myself, um, William Cole. Robert Robinson, Sandra Brooks, Dan Leary, Donald Thompson, John Dunn, Pat Leary, Linda Bouchard. Charles Corn, William Mizano, Robert Norman, Eric Robinson, Henry Langren, Doug Jowett, and Henry Bond. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Uh, my name is Officer Mark O'Connor and I am the president of the Guilford Police Union. I'm advocating on behalf of the current members and the retirees. I think it's important, as Lieutenant Hocking said. That. In our article forty of our contract is the pension benefit review, which is the same language as the nineteen eighty-seven. Arbitration award. And. So this focus, we believe, should be on the elderly. Retired officers and the disabled officers that have served the town of Guilford. So now we have the highest inflation in over forty years and Millman's report was. Uh, they're they're the actuary was uh. Eight-point-three percent approximately, while Wall Street Journal from last week. Highest since nineteen eighty-one and it's nine-point-one percent. So. When is it time? To provide a cost of living adjustment to our retirees? So I think the language is important. And I'll just, it's just a few. It says. The Board of Selectmen shall have the right in its sole and exclusive discretion to make adjustments in the payments. Being made to former police employees previously retired under this plan. And so. For the benefit of the record and. Other people, not this, not the board. Payment is defined in Black's Law Dictionary as performance of an obligation by the delivery of money. And that examples would include an advance payment, a balloon payment, a direct payment, a down payment, a lump sum payment. So the pension committee. Prior to their analysis. And they recommended against it, which we don't believe is. Part of the rules. Had said that the taxpayers don't have a pension or a cola. Well, as Jeff Hocking said, we contributed our eight percent and. It's a risky job, and I'll point out. And it's with great joy that I encounter this is when the citizens of Guilford approached me. As I'm getting my lunch or wherever and they say, thank you for your service. What do they mean by that? I think they're damn glad that they have a good police department who will respond. Now, I'll point out that some of the things that we we do, it's it's not just me, but it's all of them. Worked every single hurricane on the street. Went to the homicide down in Field Road and interviewed that poor child that found her family butchered. And we helped grab the guy. And I was at the homicide. Last year. And I got held over. And we get ordered, we get ordered all the time. Got ordered on Father's Day and we got ordered on Thanksgiving, on and on and on. So. Certainly. A taxpayer of Guilford can. Advise their their children. To go become a police officer, but it's a tough job and when I got here in two thousand, no one else wanted to do it. I'll be glad to be here, so. Another important thing is, is Lieutenant Hocking point out, pointed out is after this arbitration award. We relied on twenty years of payments. I think that the language does not give the town the opportunity for zero. I mean, they they're allowed to. Look at the choices based upon the recommendations of Millman. So. It's our request. That the. Board of Selectmen. For the first time in over fourteen years, provide a cost of living to those elderly. Retired officers. Many of whom are disabled and many of them who are military veterans. So you see that the. The ca- the cost of living was increased by social security and by the state. But we haven't had those payments, so. I would ask you to please take care of your retired officers, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anyhow, switching to address the board in public forum. Hearing none, uh, let's move on to item four, next approval of minutes. Uh, four dot one is July fifth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting minutes, is there a motion? Oh, second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, or changes?
Yeah, I do, I have a couple of things if I could, um, there are, there's some notations in here, I think, a little shorthand about who approve, who's. But you know, moved and seconded the need to come out. But I do have a more substantive comment on page eight. Where we're discussing the um, change in the four oh one A plan to voluntary. And there's a statement, the board was not in favor of changing the plan to voluntary, I think we need to take that out, we we didn't make a vote and um. Uh, that that sentence, I believe, needs to come out, I'm not sure if I agree with that sentence myself, so I suggest removing it. And that's all I have.
Let's take a look at that, that paragraph.
Okay.
Yeah, I I could support removing that. Anyone else?
That's right.
All right, um. Anything further on this? All right, um. We try your minds, uh, select woman Renner.
Hi.
In the room?
With that adjustment.
With that adjustment, yeah.
Hi, hi, that motion carries. Uh, item four dot two, the July twelfth, special meeting minutes, uh, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Uh, second, in a second, any comments or questions?
I have a a request, um, if you all agree that this would be appropriate, um, this is the. In connection with the conversation about additional work that Mr. Gernom did to make sure that. Other boards and commissions, particularly public safety, had had some involvement with the Baldwin proposal. Um, and where I'm looking is the bottom, the pages aren't numbered, but it's the bottom of the second page. Um, I actually asked, it's the last big paragraph on the bottom of that page, um. It says that I noted that Mr. Gernom was busy the past week getting all that done, but what, really, I was asking him exactly what he did. And I would like to see a paragraph in there, which I believe can be taken from the video. With with a quote from Mr. Gernom, just explaining the procedure that he went through since our first discussion. Of the proposal to make sure that the other boards and commissions and so on, that he had done the the correct due diligence. Would it, do you agree, anyone agree or disagree?
Yeah, there's no question, that was the gist of what was happening there and you noted it particularly, Cliff did touch the basis.
He did, yep, he did, he explained in a lot of detail about all the work he had done and that satisfied us, so I'd like to see that documented.
Got it, um. Put it in, um, just above. Um, or ju- just after that paragraph you just mentioned?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, why why don't we revise a minute to bring them back next? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's a good idea.
All right, on the table, is there a motion at the table? Sure. In a second. Uh, let me try your minds on table, uh, select one Renner.
Hi.
Those in the room?
Hi, hi.
That motion carries. Item five. My next director, Mary Jane Millivice. Saving report, monthly report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Sue.
Good morning.
Ready?
I'm gonna start off um, with revenues, uh, so this is our preliminary June thirty reports for the end of the year, they are unaudited. Um, and we will be coming back next month with more finalized versions, um, as we work. Um, you'll see that, um. We are expecting, uh, we we have brought in a hundred and one point nine percent of our um, budget in the revenues. And uh, these numbers are probably pretty close, I don't expect too many changes um, to these numbers um, in in the revenue, um, we're. Pretty much caught up to date and I and I doubt there's too much more that will be coming in, so this is where we stand on revenues today.
Question? Questions on the resume?
No.
Positive, yeah. And it's coming in in the places that we anticipated there might be, uh, you know, town clerk, uh, just continuing with requiring fees based on what's going on in the market.
Building department.
Building in terms of permitting, uh, tax collection, uh, strong, uh, but also, uh, golf. Fire was was up as well, youth and family services. And with all the recent youth and family services, it's obviously a significant caseload increase that they've, they've had. Okay.
Um, so on on the expenditures, um, you'll note that I did two reports, but I'm gonna start with the regular report. Um, which is titled unaudited preliminary, um, here, of course, we still have a whole month of uh, bills um, to process. Bills are still coming in that had, um, for items that were um, ordered throughout June, um, so next month, um. These numbers will change, in addition, um, what's not included here are the first two payrolls in July. Which actually will be accrued back to um, last year because they um, were payments for July, so all. Those adjustments have not been made in these numbers, um, either. Uh, I do have um, some requests for carryover funds um, in the capital, things that didn't get um, done, so those we we typically do later on. Um, as well, um, so if you, if you look at this first one, um, and just on the town side, it does show. Um, an overage of two-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand dollars at the bottom, which is why provided. Um, the second uh, spreadsheet for you, which is called adjusted for pending transfers, as you know, throughout the year. Um, we have consistently talked about um, usage of some of the committed funds. Uh, that we have set aside over the years and you'll see, um, I have a column that I've added called pending transfers. Which highlight um, where those numbers stand today, uh, we're not requesting that those done because we do have. Uh, more invoices that are that are coming in and we may or may not need all of the funds that are in this column. But if you were to take those transfers um, and apply it to the budget, it's showing for the town side, uh, two-hundred-and-two-thousand-dollar um, surplus. Which um, will be eaten up by the accruals and the payments that we we still have have coming in, so, um, and. I keep referring to town because the Board of Education has a million dollars left to spend, but they anticipate spending. Um, that as well, we have their balloon payments for payroll and that type of stuff. So, um, I am expecting on the expenditure side, um, to be closer to a a balanced budget. Um, at at this point, so.
This is really helpful, thank you.
All right, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't like to see the minus sign at the bottom of the page. But, um, hopefully you're all aware of all of those adjustments I've been talking about month after month.
Yes.
That are coming through.
Are the capital, uh, anticipated expenditures any particular, one particular large item or just a bunch of small?
Um, I have a couple, um, public works ones that you know, that that are larger, it's mostly public works in the capital.
Now, uh, I know you've been working with the uh, the fire department. That number is substantial, we had talked about it last month, but uh, it was a, it was a problem area. What, you know, what kind of conversations?
Um, well, we have, we were able to um, close out all of their purchase orders, um, which which helped. Um, there are two additional transfers that, um, I know of, um, we have, uh, the last. Covid testing and. Uh, the covid um, shots and test kit giveaway, um, that we did, uh, that's about ten thousand dollars. Um, and we have a receivable that we're working on, um, a military. Receivable, so that we have someone out on military leave, um, and so we'll be getting money back, uh, we anticipated that these, I believe, somewhere around. Seventy thousand or or it's a substantial amount of money, I believe, um, but I don't have those numbers yet, but. That's, that's all, uh, I have, so keep in mind, I have. Two weeks of payroll to apply to that, um, as I, as I alluded to, um, uh, earlier. Uh, so that that number is is apt to go up rather than down. I, I, I. The past two months been, um, you know, talking with, um, the chief and the deputy chief, um, as I reported last week. Um, we do have a couple of people out, um, like the military and another person on a medical leave. Because of that, we have almost three-hundred-thousand dollars of replacement plus for just those two people. Um, that makes up a significant amount of that overage. I'm sure the fire chief, as he has in the past, is more than willing to attend, um, specifically, at least the board of finance meeting next month. Um, but. Uh, as far as I know, we've done. All all that I am aware of.
And the replacements salaries are for, uh, traditional replacement, uh. As you've described, uh, and not because of additional duties that are work associated with COVID.
No, we are, we are covering, uh, yeah, we are getting those plus back, um, we're working with FEMA right now, um, on the. The covid. Booster shot, uh, you know, the boosters, so that that money I've already have in as receivables, um, even though we haven't gotten the money from FEMA. Um, we've already taken those numbers out of this.
And Mitch, um, they're down some employees, fire department.
Five.
Down five at this point.
Well, they're down, they're down five, they hired though four. Uh, part-time firefighters to fill some of that gap. That they're working with and possibly, uh, depending on circumstances, some or all those four may. Become full-time, but for right now, they're part-time.
Well, it's just, it it is concerning, the replacement salaries now, um. Better than one-third of the regular full-time salary line. Which. Suggests that the staffing model is not working, uh, but it's not working largely because we have vacancies at this point.
The chief or or assistant chief should probably address that more, they watch those numbers very closely.
I'm sure this will, uh, come to the attention of certain. Board of Finance members at tonight's meeting. I'm sure this will come to the attention of certain board of finance members at tonight's meeting, so might wanna. Talk to Charlie and Mike about having some representation for tonight's meeting. Okay, anything else on expenses? Right, medical?
Fund, um. So, uh, you know, we've been talking about when is the effect of of covid gonna hit the medical fund? And 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 we have the past couple of months, at least the last two months of the year. Um, if you look at the bottom line, we are projecting a deficit of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this fund. Um, which it will be absorbed from surpluses, like, you know, during the during the two covid years where we had laps. So that that's where we stand right now, as far as the underlying. Fund, the catastrophic claims were at forty-five percent. At at this point with twenty-five people over the seventy-five dollar, seventy-five thousand dollar limit, and seven of them over the hundred and fifty thousand dollar limit.
And and the clock started.
Clock restarted July one.
We started July one, so we'll go back to first dollar, right?
Correct, yep.
Are there any other, are there any lagging claims that might come in against that? In other words, will we receive some benefit from that policy in the next thirty or sixty days?
For the catastrophic claims?
Yes.
No. No, it's the hard June thirty cutoff. Whatever they have in.
So we, obviously by definition, insurance is a risk, and in this case, they had considerably higher premium than we got back in benefits, maybe that'll. Be reflective in what the next premium is, maybe.
Um, that, that's probably not, you know, we we do, it is based on, you know, rolling claims, so. We we are working very hard on catastrophic claims without.
Understood, sure.
But keep in mind that for many years, we we benefited immensely from from this, so.
Avoiding bad up and downsides.
Correct.
Okay.
That's the nature of insurance.
I, yeah, I got it, you say for a lot of years you don't need it.
Against catastrophic loss or.
Okay, okay, good, thanks. Oh, I did have one other question, on claim, the admin piece, why would we be seventy-nine thousand dollars in the hole on the admin, I would think that's like a fixed number.
It it's not, it's it's a percentage.
Okay.
Um, so as a, you know, as the claims walk and down, certain items are are more or less so. Some items are fixed, but not all.
Okay.
I know, I noticed that the Slim Nation is included in here, it's a very small amount, but I was wondering if you happen to know about the participation?
Oh, thank you for great segue, wonderful segue, right?
You're welcome.
Do I have a report on Slim Nation, because I thought the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance might be interested to know how that is working out, so. Um, so the town had twenty-two employees apply, and twenty were chosen by lottery. The Board of Ed had twenty, it also has twenty people in in the system at this point. Uh, we had one person drop out, but was replaced by somebody on the waiting list, so we are, we are filled with our forty people in the Slim Nation. So I have a couple of quotes from people that have sent Mitch some some notes, he's gone to Mitch. Um, so from the, some, a member of the Board of Ed writes, I wanted to reach out to you personally. And thank you for bringing Rob Nevin's Slim Nations program to Guilford. I can't begin to tell you what a difference it has made in my eating habits, and it has only been three weeks. I was a true junk food junkie, this is the first time I have ever gone this long without eating processed food and candy. I feel so much better without having the highs and lows of the sugar rush. I appreciate the time you put in to make this happen for us, thank you again for changing my way of life. And a member of the town, I have been following the Rob Nevin's plan for two weeks now. I can tell you it's working for me, my case is very different than most, but it's working. Thank you for doing all that hard work to put this together for all of us, so it's a thank you, these went to Mitch because of Mitch's push to put this through.
A third one come through from the Board of Ed just on Friday afternoon, these are unsolicited.
Yeah, these, yeah, these were coming in which led me to 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 send you, but I just wanted to give you an idea. I know just talking to people even in this building, you know, that that are working, it's it. I believe it's really working for a lot of people, and we're only a month or so in, so.
Yeah, anecdotally, we were in this very room last week, somebody's birthday, and there were a couple of folks in this building. Who did not partake in the wonderful cake because they're on the plan. It's saying there was a lot of discussion.
Yeah, we should have had all the birthdays in April, and then we. But I just wanted to share that with you, and I will share that with the Board of Finance this evening, um, so, you know. Hopefully the success of this program might, you you might be willing to, you know, do it again after this one, this one is complete, so.
Thank you.
Anything else from Mary Jane? Thank you. Thanks. Item six, economic development director, Sherry Cody, good morning, Sherry.
Good morning, can you hear me okay?
Hear you quite well.
Great, thank you, Tracy, can I share my screen? I'm not with you in person because I do like to do a little show and tell with a PowerPoint. Even though I'm right next door. Think I'm good to share, perfect, all right. And can you see my slides?
Yes.
Perfect, all right, good morning, everyone. Um, so I will start with one of my favorites, and that is our property enhancement grants. Um, so we did have one project that was approved at our July Economic Development Commission meeting. Um, so our total project costs, sorry, for this application, twenty-five thousand dollars, and I'll show you the the application in just a moment. Um, but so for year-to-date, our total project costs are eighty-six thousand dollars from all of our participants. This would be our twelfth application that was approved, and so we've invested eleven thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. The reason that's not twelve thousand dollars is because a few people asked for less than the thousand dollar limit. Uh, and so our businesses are investing a total of seventy-four thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. Um, so again, I'll I'll repeat what I say every time, and I think that this is a good return on our investment. Uh, so this is the application that was approved this month, uh, the construction of a pergola and landscaping at South Lane Bistro. And so they're spending twenty-five thousand dollars, and we're giving them one thousand dollars towards their project. Um, so we have had some ribbon cuttings and milestone celebrations also over the last month or so. Uh, in Bloom Floral Warehouse out on the west end of Boston Post Road is a new business celebrating that with the Chamber of Commerce. Amanda's Healthy Cooking here by the Green, that's in the location that used to be Vietnam's Cafe. Avenged Fitness Clothing, that one was celebrated just with the town, and that is located where Shift Cycle used to be. They had a pretty big party in their parking lot, they are going to be using the first floor of Shift Cycle where that where that used to be. And then on the second floor, they will be renting to a children's dance group. Uh, so they were there and performed as well, I don't have photos yet because they had a professional photographer there. Um, and I just haven't received the the photos from that yet. Uh, milestones, this is something that the Shoreline Chamber has really taken an interest in recently. Um, of celebrating our miles, our business's milestones, so you can see Bishop's has been in business for a hundred and fifty years, so they had a little celebration. Uh, we celebrated with Guilford Texaco, celebrating fifty years in business. Breakwater Books, fifty years, of course, new ownership over the last couple of years. And then the Shoreline Chamber also held their own celebration, celebrating ten years since the merger between Guilford and Branford Chambers. Uh, in developments, we have a couple of new ones, Strawberry Hill Preserve. Um, at twenty-two twenty-two Boston Post Road, that application has been received by P and Z, but no action has been taken on that yet. Uh, Bishop's Orchard is asking for a zone change for a portion of their land. Um, and then I I think I mentioned to you previously, three ninety-seven Church Street with the medical office building, that is working its way through the process. I believe they are concluded with Design Review Committee, have had their first public hearing with P and Z, and will have another one as well. Um, and then Hubbard Road, of course, has been approved, but to segue into. Uh, this, so the Greater New Haven Chamber of Commerce, every year holds a regional real estate and construction forecast. Um, and they have invited their municipal partners to present a project. Uh, to be held or to be shown showcased at their event, and so we did put together a little. Uh, it's a, it's a poster board for the Hubbard Road project, our first affordable housing project. Um, so that was displayed at the event for the Greater New Haven Chamber of Commerce, so that's good, just a lot of eyeballs, you know. Uh, seeing some of the work that we're doing here in town. Um, tourism, so this is a great initiative that I'm pretty passionate about, and you may recall during the ARPA. Uh, communications or planning, when we knew we were receiving ARPA funds, we put together a list of projects. And right at the top of that list was tourism and promoting tourism in the town. Um, you know, so we we talked about doing a tourism website, creating a tourism website, and the Guilford Preservation Alliance popped up and said, but we already have a tourism website. Um, so what can we do to partner, and so we've taken that to the next step, and we have signed a memorandum of understanding with GPA. Um, that the town and GPA will share the responsibility of a tourism website. Um, this is really important to us because previously GPA would allow businesses to be on their website only if they paid. A fee to be on their website, and that's something they needed to do so that they could, you know, pay their their costs. Um, because we're a municipality, I think it's important that we promote all of our tourism businesses, not, you know. Uh, limited to those who can afford to be on the website, so they agree with that, and we are moving forward, we have issued an RFP. Uh, for a web developer to redesign this website, this website, I'm not sure if you've ever taken an opportunity to look at it. Was designed for the kiosk, the electronic billboard kiosk that is over by the information booth by the community center. Um, was not at all designed for online use, it was really designed for the kiosk, so it's not optimized for. Um, people to be looking at it from outside of Guilford. So we have issued the RFP and received five proposals, so right now we're in sort of that evaluation phase of looking at the proposals to see how we want to move forward. Um, with a set budget, GPA is donating funds to this as well as the town using some of our ARPA funds. Um, so I'm pretty excited that, you know, during the fall sometime, we will hopefully have a new website and be able to promote that and and get people to come to town. More people to come to town and spend their money. Um, so also sort of in the realm of 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 tourism a little bit, you know, I've been talking to you a lot about our welcome signs, and they've been, you know. Uh, talked about a lot from people in town, people coming to town, but we're also hearing from other towns. Who might be seeing a little green, a little jealousy because we have these beautiful signs. I'm bringing this up again today only to let you know that, uh, sort of phase two is starting, and that is two things. One, we are installing solar lights at these welcome signs, the exit signs, so that they will be lit up at night, because currently there's there's no lighting. Uh, so that's a little fuzzy picture, terribly fuzzy, because it came off of the internet of what the solar little lamp will look like. Um, and then the 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 next part of this phase is our internal wayfinding signs. So I'll show you some images of what the committee has come up with for some wayfinding signs. Um, unfortunately, I learned just a few minutes ago that the DOT is going to require us to do. Standalone posts for our signs, so where you see them combined with other signs, that will not be allowed. Uh, we have to go back to the drawing board and put them on their own posts, which may not be a bad thing, because some of the posts that exist now are a little bit twisted and bent. Um, but this at least gives you a visual of what they will look like when they are completed. Um, they've been designed, the locations have been chosen, they've been run by our town engineer. Um, who has agreed with the location and and, you know, they're not in any kind of danger of being in the way. Um, and so this will be really great once it's concluded, but as I mentioned, we do have to sort of evaluate the post situation. Because of the email that we just received a few minutes ago. Um, so that, that's it, any questions?
Thank you, Sherry, anybody have any comments?
Positive.
Good day, thank you, Sherry, I think this is, we're gonna continue this 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 routine of having you report out once a month. It's good, it's good to get the clue in as to what's taking place, so thank you very much.
Do we have any discussions going on about retail vacancies?
Yeah, Sherry, you know, the rumor mill is rife, and actually. Beyond rumor mill at this point, it's been confirmed that the old Walmart spot will have new tenant.
Yes, so I wasn't really able to hear the question clearly, but I think it's what's happening that, but. Okay, so we'll start with Walmart, yes, it has been widely reported in every newspaper, I think, and on social media, at nauseam a little bit, that. Uh, TJ Maxx and Home Goods is looking at the Walmart spot, and so the building owner, property owner, is in negotiations with TJ Maxx and Home Goods. Um, if that comes to fruition, they will take up almost three quarters of the space, not the entire space that exists, so the the two stores would be on the smaller side. Um, but that would leave a third opportunity for another spot or another business. That business would be located on the very end of the Walmart space with the door facing the side of the building, not the front. So it's a little bit wonky, it would, you know, be a little bit different, but in my opinion, I think if it's a destination spot. Um, like a gym or a medical facility, people would park on that side of the building and enter the building, I don't think it necessarily has to have a a, you know, a door in the front. Um, that has been written in the newspaper already too, so I feel comfortable saying that again. Um, so, yeah, that's in negotiations, there is a rumor, I had hoped that Target would come. Um, but that's not happening, there is a rumor that Target may be going into the Branford Movie Theater. Uh, which would be kind of exciting to have them nearby, that's also been published a lot on social media. And so as that's about it, we all know that Prime, uh, Prime on Whitfield is coming to the old Centro Place, Centro Pizza. Um, I think they're having some delivery concerns with delays in equipment, you know, special equipment they need for their kitchen. So that's delaying their opening, but other than that, you know, minor movements around town. Um, but I don't think anything that I can really talk about publicly that's that's in my head at the moment.
I don't know if, if Sherry's. You know, wheelhouse, yeah, wheelhouse is, give any of the residential projects that the big ones that were in the works, any up?
Yeah, sure, any of the updates like on State Street, you know, you did mention the Boston Post moved out on the west end, twenty twenty, whatever it was, twenty three.
Yep, yep, so I I think what I'll do, if that if that's okay, I wrote a report recently for Mary Jane for our per bonding consultants. Um, that actually gives an update on all of the projects in town, so I'll I'll send that out to the board. Um, I don't have it memorized in my head at the moment, I wrote it a few weeks ago, but I will send that out, and that will give you kind of an update on where some of those residential projects stand in terms of their. Uh, completion.
Right, yeah, I I thank you very much for having put that document together, we, Mary Jane and I did use that in our ratings calls last week with the standard and pours of fish. Uh, and I think it it covered almost all of the projects, the the residential projects, starting with sixty-six High Street. Um, four oh five Whitfield, which is Eagles View, State Street one, Hubbard Road. Um, the Muse, which is also on Route one, so we'll distribute that, there's. At 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 present, there looks to be close to three hundred units of housing that are on the drawing board at this point. Particularly if you take, take into account the. Particularly if you take, take into account the location across the street, the Rock Bar. The old Rock Bar.
Residential one?
Yeah, that's a hundred units going in, in, in back there.
Those are their commercial projects?
Front part of it is commercial, the first parcel, you know, where, where they're stockpiling all the materials that they're, that they're extracting. I've actually had a chance to go back in there. The topography of it has changed quite dramatically.
See if you're anywhere.
Yeah.
All right, Sheri. Timing on any, I, I know we have a lot in the works and a lot of. You know. Gossip journey not at all, but are there any, I know Eagles next probably is, that's.
I got ready for foundations over there, right by that a couple of times a day.
Yeah. I mean, are we looking next summer or following?
They're planning on being done in this winter, the first two phases they're going to do.
How about any of the other big?
Other big ones probably wouldn't break.
Working through permitting.
Yeah. It'd be interesting to see what happens at Hubbard Estates, how quickly they get moving. They've been pretty aggressive in trying to push it.
It's through P and Z, isn't it?
It's through, it was approved, fully approved, so.
Great job, Sheri. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Got it. Okay, item seven, Director.
Go ahead, Sheri. The coordination with our Madison.
Yes, yes, absolutely. So we did pull a meeting together with the two town planners, two town engineers, the two first select. People and myself to talk about IIJA, that's the infrastructure. Bill that the federal government is, is producing to see if there are projects that the two towns can be working on. I brought this up again with first selectment woman Lyons on Friday, just to kind of keep that in the back of her head in terms of what, what we could be working on. It's really more of a town planner, a town engineer question. Because they are responsible for those kinds of projects. I'm really just a convener in terms of making sure that we're trying to work together. But one of the things that came up in our initial conversation was Route one, the Route one corridor and, and making sure that the two towns are sort of. That we're working together to make Route one be sort of a. I guess coordinated effort for whatever we do on Route one. There was also some discussion between the two first, first, the two town engineers about the bridge. That is on the east end of Guilford where Madison and Guilford connect and, and doing something with that. I'm not sure exactly what it is that they, that they need to do to that bridge. But the town engineers certainly knew what, what they needed to do and they were talking about that. So. So we continue to have those conversations and, and I'll do what I can to, you know, make sure that the parties convene and, and we. Talk about how we can work together. There's a lot of money at stake, I think, but Matt will probably tell you that cog. Scrog is mostly going to be involved in that, I think, and they certainly play on a regional level.
I don't know if you're allowed to talk about it or not because it's Madison, but is there any word on that project right by the bridge?
Um, so I know that there, I'm trying to pick my words carefully at what I can say. There was a project approved years ago, I'm not sure how many, for a few slips. And a restaurant of some kind, a small restaurant. To my knowledge, that project is no longer, the, the property owner is no longer interested in doing that project. And, and that's as much as I can say, I think publicly.
Sheri, thank you very much.
Welcome.
All right, all right, item seven. Director of Human Resources, Mitch. Seven dot one, consider and act on a recommendation from the pension committee regarding cost of living adjustment.
Morning.
Good morning.
Recent I am here, and this has already been mentioned somewhat in the. Public participation portion of this meeting. The board's selectmen after receiving the report referred to in the preceding paragraph, which let me go back a second. Retirement Board shall cause a study to be made by the plan actuary. Prepare a report to the first selectman for submission to the board's selectman every two years. Commencing with the first fiscal year ending June thirtieth nineteen eighty six on the current status of the pension benefits made to all retirees. Were previously police off employees and the effective economic conditions on the payment over that period. The board's selectmen after receiving the report referred to the preceding paragraph shall have the right and its sole and exclusive discretion. To make adjustment in the payments being made to former police employees previously retired under this plan. This is in the police collective bargaining agreement. As was mentioned before, the. Our actuary Milliman did put together a report and the. Pension Committee did review it and has made a recommendation not to. Adjust for a cost of living at this time. I have provided to you, you should have a board pack. Copies of the pension committee minutes, the draft minutes of that meeting of June fifteenth. As well as the report from Milliman that were provided that for that meeting that was. Dated June ninth. In addition, there were the cost of living adjustments compared statistics that were also provided by Milliman. For your perusal. So at this point, it is in your hands.
All right, questions? So. Tell, tell me what Milliman's charge was exactly, their descriptions we provided, limited review of the data used. Reasonableness, but tell me, tell me exactly what their charge was.
Their charge is to determine what the. Consumer Price Index, AKA Cost Living Adjustment. Would be for the, for the, the years that are being. Considered at this time. And so what they've put together is that if an employee had retired before January first twenty twenty. The full cost, CPI as they call it, Consumer Price Index would be eight and a half percent.
See that.
And I'm not sure why, but Milliman has consistently over the many, many years. Showed a full CPI as well as a sixty percent of CPI. As well. That's just some straight math there, really.
Yeah.
And then they've also provided for you what the impact would be on each of the. Pension plans over the next, I believe, eight, twenty years, eighteen to twenty years. That this would be amortized over for this particular. Cost of living adjustment if it were so approved.
That's the change just for this one year, this one year was approved either to a hundred or sixty percent.
Correct.
All right. And the spreadsheet you provided, the date provided breaks it out. Various. All three of the.
Yeah, each, each of the three pension plans are looked at separately. We usually do that anyway. In this case, as this has already been reported and as I'm sure you're aware. The only requirement for the board's selectman is to review the police pension plan. Traditionally, when there have been adjustments made or adjustments not made, it's affected all three plans.
So the question before us is, is police department specifically, do you have any comments or questions?
I, I just want to make sure I'm reading the numbers correctly. Can, can you just point us to the, the highlights here?
Off to the numbers. Well, if you look at the attachment that was put together from the cost of living, retiree cost of living adjustment letter. Put out by Jen Castellano from Milliman, there are, there are three attachments. Since we've discussed mostly the police, I'll look at the police plan for right now. The actuary determined contribution which this board has approved. For, for the police plan for twenty twenty three, eight hundred and seventy six thousand, seven hundred and eighty one dollars. The impact. Would be, and you can see in that, if you look at proposed change number one. The impact going forward, starting next, next fiscal year, when this would be impacted, will not impact this budget. Impact the following budget. Would begin at a hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars for fiscal year ending twenty twenty four, a hundred and eighty four thousand for twenty twenty five, a hundred and eighty five for. Twenty twenty six and so on. Do you see that, Sue?
I, I do see that. That's the middle exhibit.
Yes.
Okay, and that is, I'm sorry, I know you guys are all ahead of me on this. That's for all employees, not just police.
No, that's police. Look at the very, very top of that page. It says Town of Guilford.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
And there's, there's two other sheets that are very similar. That would show the impacts for if you were to approve for all three or one, two or three. The employees' pension plan, first year is eighty six thousand dollars and for these, the school employees would be first year forty five thousand dollars.
Non-certified school employees.
Non-certified, right. This is not teachers. They're in their own teacher retirement plan through the state of Connecticut.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
One sixty eight.
And so if you look at the very bottom of those columns, it'll show you the total cost. Over twenty years for each of the three plans. You see that?
Yes, I do see that. All right, for, just, just, I'm so sorry, just forgive me. There's three, there's three exhibits. What is the first one? The other two are labeled police and, and non-certified school, but what is the first one?
Employees, that's, that's your town employees.
Okay, so none of, nothing here is the total. They're all, they're all.
No, you have the total, the total altogether would be approximately four point, five point three million dollars over the twenty years.
That's why the, the pension committee minutes say it's between one million and, and five million. I was trying to.
That was calculating, whoa.
That's calculating all of them.
Okay.
So the one million essentially is at least only at sixty percent.
So your, your employee, your employees' plan, Sue, would include people in the Guilford Employee Association. Guilford Supervisors Association, your dispatchers and your firefighters.
Gotcha. Okay, all right. So adding the three of these together gives that five million dollar number.
And, and also your, your non, non-represented people as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I apologize.
Don't apologize.
Make sure I got it.
Four hundred and thirty five. That's an annual.
No, that's.
Over twenty years.
Yeah, but, but for, for a call that happens just this year, if you didn't call it every year. Then those numbers would be, you know. Colic is the baseline once.
Yeah. Okay, but.
Your, your one year impact, Charles, on fiscal year twenty twenty four for all three is about three hundred thousand dollars. One hundred and sixty eight thousand for, I do this in my head, one hundred and sixty eight thousand for the police. Eighty six thousand for the employees, forty five thousand for the non-certified board of that. That's the one year, your first, that'd be your first year impact. Of granting the cost of living adjustment.
Okay.
As was mentioned earlier in public forum, we had had discussions here and have advocated to talk about the fact that the police aren't the only union. That is facing the pressures of inflation and the time value of money based on their retirement date. So one, one of the things I did was I took a look at the differential between the three plans in terms of. What the impact would be if we were to approve this at the, those, either of those two proposed changes, like at the full CPI or modified or reduced CPI. And it's, it's interesting for the police retirement fund, the proposed change number one. Basically results in an increased contribution on an annualized basis of about twenty percent. And then under option two, it's a little over twelve percent. If you go to the town, the GBA pension plan. Those same adjustments are eight point two percent and four point eight percent. And then lastly, if you do the schools, non-certified pension plan, the proposed changes. To CPI index numbers is four point nine and two point nine, ninety percent. Why such a dramatic difference in the impact?
Well, I, I think, I think it's fair to say that the, the police pension plan as it's been established is a much more expensive plan because. That group, unlike the other two groups, can collect not at age sixty five, but actually the time of her retirement. So retirement, retirement normal, retirement age is twenty years. Many will stay till twenty five years because it'll allow them to get retiree medical benefits for both themselves and a spouse. But even so, you're looking at people collecting fifteen to twenty years earlier. Than the people in the other plans. Therefore, that, that's why that cost is so much more. Also, the police plan is the only plan that allows any. Implementation of any, any, and it's, it's limited. Or it's limited appropriately over time into their base pay as well. So it's, it's a more expensive plan. There's no doubt about it. I think they recognize it, which is one reason why they are paying eight percent of the plan. They recognize that. They have a two point two five percent multiplier for the people retiring now. Which is higher than the, than, than the, most of the people on the employees' pension plan. There's varying depending on which, which. Bargain unit or group people are in, that varies as well. But in all cases, the other plans are pretty much, unless it's a disability, which is an exception to all the plans. It would be age sixty five would be your, your normal retirement age.
Mitch.
And I'm sorry, the, the fire department does have a modified retirement age, which is sooner, but it's not as. Quick, if you will, as the, as the police plan, which has been this way for a long time. That's right.
Without, I don't know if you have this information available and without associating any names. To the numbers, I'm sort of curious what the range of annual pension. Benefits are for the police that are retired and are receiving these benefits. I mean, we're talking.
The, the range can be low depending on how long ago someone retired. Remember, the benefits I just pronounced. The two point two five percent multiplier, the twenty years and out. Probability, the, the salaries that police officers are making. Now, remember, this is based on, on salaries as well. People retired twenty years ago, didn't have a lot of that benefit. They were making a lot less money, as is expected. They weren't able to retire as soon as has been negotiated in more recent contracts. They don't have a two point two five percent multiplier. The, the additional money for overtime might not have been there when they retire. I'm not sure when that exactly kicked in. So there are probably, I don't have it off, I do have it back on my desk, I could find it in my computer, what, what the people are making, but it could be. A lower amount. I don't know how low is low, but I can tell you that based on the actuary report that we have from. July one, twenty twenty one, that the average annual benefit is about thirty four thousand dollars.
It, okay.
That's the average.
Average is always a tricky number.
Yeah, so it's gonna go from much lower to much higher.
Right. And so, but in addition to that, I'd be also curious what percentage of retirees. From the police department are receiving benefits and have not yet reached the age of sixty five.
Quite a few. Quite, anybody who's retired in the last fifteen years is pretty much, not every one of them. Most of them have retired. Usually I say in their fifties. Jeff has better statistics than I do on this, but I could check, but most are, you know.
And, and.
Hold on, I think, I think I might be able to give you an answer. So of the service retirees right now. That means people who are receiving pension now. There is one person under fifty that was. Based on when they were able to retire. There are nineteen people between ages fifty and fifty nine. There are thirteen between ages sixty and sixty nine. There are four between seventy and seventy nine. There are three between eighty and eighty nine. There's nobody over eighty nine.
So wait, let me understand that. You have seven people over the age of sixty nine?
There are seven people over the age of sixty nine.
That's not just police, that's.
That's just police. This is the police.
That is just, that's just police.
And. In addition, the, the, the police, as opposed to the certified teachers who are not part of social security, their retirement is a completely different program. Police officers paid into social security as well?
Yes, as do we.
Mary Jane, you have your hand up?
I, I just wanted to say, I, I have the monthly benefit report in front of me. Each month, it's a. Each month, it's approximately a hundred and fifty five thousand dollars in benefits for fifty five people averaging twenty eight hundred dollars per benefit.
Averaging again.
That's the average.
The spreadsheet would tell maybe a slightly.
What, what Mary Jane, we have in front of you is probably, you have a check register?
Yes.
So is it possible? So is it possible for you to look at one of the lower amounts that we was looking for?
Yeah, well, it's on this page, I see one at five hundred and eighty two and another at four thousand six twenty four. So there's a big gap there. I find another one at six thousand one ninety. Trying to see if I find anything lower than the five hundred. The lowest I have is four ninety.
When Mary Jane says benefits, she's talking pension, uh.
Pension only.
And not the health benefit.
You're, you're only the check register for the pension benefit, correct?
Pension benefits, yes.
Okay. Is, is, do we have the discretion to do targeting? Cause I think I heard uh, Officer O'Connor. Uh, emphasize addressing the elderly and disabled. I was, if I wasn't mistaken, I thought he focused on the, on those.
We've mentioned it, yeah.
One of the, if I can point out, one of the Milliman exhibit seems to indicate that some towns do that.
Yeah.
I'm reading it correctly.
I also want to understand while we're, while we're carrying through the language of the contract and our options. Um, Mr. Hocking. Made an argument with regard to what happened at, uh, Pete's lawn, but I hate to always do that for the poor lawyer. Um, uh, what happened at that? Some arbitration twenty years ago and what the outcome is, you know, breaking down that exact language would be sort of instructive. Making sure we understand, I mean, there was an implication in the statement that. This is not discretionary as to whether to pay the benefit or not, but only the amount of the benefit. And I'd be really interested to make sure all this time we were on solid ground.
Uh, yeah, if you answer that from my standpoint, for the last six or seven times that you looked at this. As you know, and it's been well documented, there's not been a cola that has been granted. This is the first time that this information brought to my attention.
Okay.
I've not heard about this before. I've just been going by the language, and you have too. The language in the police contract, the language in the pension plan, the pension plan, the police retirement fund was never amended. To say anything with language such as that, that says that there has to be a cola, the. You know, we can, we can mince words here about what it means by sole and exclusive discretion. And that is Mark O'Connor pointed out to make adjustment. So, does that mean of discretion to make an adjustment? Does that mean you have discretion not to make an adjustment? I'm not an attorney, so I don't know. Back to what Sue said, um. Uh, I'm looking at the comparative statistics that you referred to. And are you referring to just, there's a couple of, I guess it's just north. It just says, the cola does not start until year following sixty second birthday. Is that what you're referring to?
Well, yes, but I think in a, in a larger sense, some of the others have other um, kind of sort of separating criteria. Date of retirement, a couple of them have. It's about several of them have date of retirement. So, so I, I don't know how that affects us, but I guess I'm just saying goes, it doesn't have to be all or nothing. Obviously, it doesn't have to be a hundred percent of CPI or sixty percent. It could be what, any amount. Um, but it seems like there are a lot of different ways of looking at it. Possibly breaking it down.
When this report says cola, yes or no, does that mean this year or in the contract period?
I'm sorry, what are you referring to, Charles?
This, in this report, the same report says cola, yes or no.
Oh, whether that town provides a cola, so if there, if it says no, that town does not provide a cola.
Which attachment are you looking at, Charles?
This one? The question is.
Okay.
This was from, this was provided by Milliman, looking at.
Okay.
So, comparative Connecticut towns, it does not have the, the, the same breadth of uh, numbers that were referred to in the public session. They're looking at similar towns, um, and um, a lot of, lot of, some, I don't know, a lot, some towns are in the MERS system. Which does provide a cola, I believe.
The, the question I'm trying to ask is when it says yes or no, is that, did they? Make a cola determination this year, or is that just, like, we would fall into. In this comparison, we would be yes, cause we have the.
Correct, we would fall into yes, that the.
So that's, so this is not yes or no, they did. The reason I bring that up in the minutes. W- w- one of the pension committee members made the point about. This would not be the year for cola anyway, because of the, oh, how the pension is falling, so. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
My, my understanding is the ones that say no, do not have.
Have the option.
Don't even have anything in any kind of language that even.
So we have to, uh, you know, this is even another discussion, you know, not philosophical question of whether it's grand cola. It's a matter of this particular year also. That's the two points that I gleaned from the minutes are. You know, the overall cost, long term and the consequences, and also is this year to do it? Yes, the, the hit, the pension is, is making the market.
We obviously, you obviously have the discretion to be able to grant the cola, cause that has been done in the past, and that is, you know, part of the contract. The question is, as you say. Whether you feel it's appropriate this year. And you have, like I say, you have the pension committee's input, uh, you have Milliman's input, which, you know, is. You know, the, the only input is really factual, except as I pointed out, and they point out, there will be a. Impact on your um, your contributions going forward, and the one years. Cola will have impact over the next twenty. And if you do it two years from now again, it's gonna, it's gonna escalate, you know, it's gonna come out. But that's, that's your decision, that's your discretion and how you wanna. Build your budget or.
Well, this chart, the, the, this comparative statistics is issuing, I mean, the towns are. Towns that do pay are all over the place, like Madison, just for, not that we compare ourselves to Madison ever, but uh. You know, they're, they're, if I'm reading this correctly, they, they just have a locked in one percent.
That's my understanding, it's a lock, it's a lock in. So it's a lot of math, a lot, a lot, a lot of colas are that, they're just locked in, they. They've negotiated a one percent, a two percent increase for all time, and there's no discretion on the board.
That's a little bit where that arbitration was going. I, you know, again, not being an attorney and not, you know, reading it and everything. But when they said that that was a decision in arbitration, that means there had been a discussion. And they were simply picking sides in that discussion, not whether or not there was one, just. That's what I'm looking at, but I don't know.
Ergent, institutional knowledge there.
Well, I don't want to, because it would be hears. I wasn't part of that negotiation.
Okay. Well, I, I, my presumption is this thing's been well thought over in our position.
Well, yeah, that, that's the third part of this, this discussion is, you know, we have a pension committee to, to do this kind of.
And I'm sure they've poured over the same question.
Yeah. So I, I would have to see some. I'd have to have more information to override the pension.
Yeah.
Um, when I was looking at the comparative statistics, um, I was reading that column, yes, no column as to whether or not it was. Um, automatic, because all the ones that say yes, it's an. Right, so I think, that's, that, that's, let's clarify that question with Milliman, right?
Uh, so in other words, some of the noes might be like ours where it's.
Yeah.
Right, gotcha. These are all for uh, um.
Yeah, the yes, no is very vague there. What does yes, no mean? And you know, just because other towns are doing it does not necessarily mean, you know, that's our reason for doing it because. Not all towns make perfect decisions.
Yeah. I have a question.
Sure.
Um, so, so we go through this process every couple of years because the police contract mentions it. None of the other contracts do, but we, but is that right? But we've decided to extend the conversation and all the calculations to. All the unions because we or somebody decided it wouldn't be fair to look at just one. Is that kind of?
That's my understanding.
Okay, but.
The only, the only obligation, the only obligation you have to review a cost of living adjustment is written into the police contract.
Right, so I guess one thing I'm wondering, and I think that it quite possibly can't be discussed in this meeting, but I'm wondering if there was. Because I don't like this conversation. It comes up, it puts us in an advers- adversarial position relative to the police department, and I don't like that. Um, and I'm wondering if there was any conversation during the last contract negotiations of taking that out. And I'm sure you can't answer that in this, in this setting. Um, but it seems to me that, that, that we wouldn't be able to take, the town would not be able to take that out. Unless we put something else in because of the give and take that always happens in a negotiation. So there's value to the police and having this in their contract, and it's not in anyone else's. Um, and all, all the contracts contain different provisions. I've never heard anyone say, gee, you know. Um, this contract gives everybody something or other, and we better give that to everybody else because that's fair. I mean, we don't have that conversation. So to me, I don't think it's necessary to extend what we're looking at now to the other unions. I'm sure that's an unpopular thing to say, but. I, I would be inclined to follow what's in the contracts, which is that we look at it for the police, first of all. Um. Secondly, I'm wondering, now that we're looking at um, different ways that other towns have structured this, depending on retirement date, depending on age and things like that. I'd be interested in hearing if perhaps, um, Lieutenant Hocking, if anybody's talked about doing something like. Making a suggestion for something like that.
Yeah. I mean, I've been retired for ten years, but what I can tell you is that. Um, a lot of the cycles that I was involved in the union negotiations, um. Like, it was like, like, almost like the ground rules for, we got this in our, this was many, many years ago, and for. Cycle after cycle after cycle, we were told, don't even bring up the pension type thing. I mean, we, you know, when they say we're locked out right now, I think they're locked out to. Few years or something like that. We've been kind of locked out for a long time, just in the way it, it proceeded, but. Um, as far as, you know, the colas and stuff. The, the spreadsheet you have from Millman shows, I think it's Woodbridge, who's part of MERS, and. I pointed out at the pension committee, it's a little misleading. They only show five departments with colas. I mean, MERS itself has twenty seven departments in it. Fact that they only showed one, you know, like saying, oh, hey, it's not very common, there's only five departments getting colas. Um, I, I have, I get my own, sir, what is MERS? It's the municipal employee. Oh, we, we had actually tried to get into that.
Sorry, thank you.
I know, that's in the fire department, but anyways, and you know, there's like Orange in particular, um, you know, Mitch is a selectman there. They, they bargained, uh, for two, they get two percent a year guaranteed. Um, they, you know, that was all, that was something that. I'm pretty sure it was when they went to the 401K as part of the. You know, to get it, so to speak, and, and I'm just speaking on, from what I was told from a retired.
Hey, you're correct.
That, that, that was kind of the negotiation, like, we'll give the retirees a two percent cola every year if you go to the 401K. I mean, that happened in Guilford, I didn't see that on, on the, on the agenda, but that's kind of how, every, I mean, everybody negotiates. I mean, like, like Sue said, we don't, we're not able to cherry pick from anybody else's contract. And this is the only time, I've been in, on, you know, nineteen eighties when I started. On the town, I've never seen anybody been allowed to cherry pick from another person's, another union's benefit plan. You know, it was always, well, if they have that, you don't, uh, obviously, if that was the case, everybody would want medical. You know, but that doesn't happen, so.
So the Sue's point, which, you know, Ben, as I mentioned, I'll let you jump back in, it, it is an uncomfortable discussion, it's slightly adversarial. It, it's, and I think some of this does make more sense in the contract negotiation process. Which is by definition an adversarial process, a controlled adversarial process, but nonetheless, there's conflicting interest. Uh, in order to make a decision as to what makes sense in a situation where a lot of folks. Are retiring early and or have second jobs. I mean, the piece of, missing piece of information to me, a big piece of missing. Is what are the economics of the people who are in that slot from forty eight, sixty eight? And what their outside, I mean, you know, if I was being absolutely hard-nosed about it, I'd be like, okay, you're telling me that this is a struggle. Wh- what are the outside resources? Now, that's not appropriate for today, it may or may not be appropriate in the context of a, of a. Contract negotiation, but it's certainly a piece of information that would inform which way the town, the town goes, and, and you know, that, that may change everybody's analysis of. How hard they push for stuff, and it's like, okay, fine, I've got to disclose my outside assets and earnings, that's an interesting piece of news, but it would change. This, the decision-making process for sure, but again, that's not for today, someday maybe in a, a union negotiation that comes up. Let's have directed at you, Jeff, I don't mean to be talking to you, but there, there, there's a lot of information that we're trying to. Process without having it right in front of us here for today's purposes.
To, to answer your question, then back to Jeff, uh, you know, we don't, I don't. Uh, keep track necessarily of what people do after they leave here. Uh, what I try to keep track of is their email addresses and their, and their uh, phone numbers and their, and their addresses, so we make sure we get the information out. Then when, when we contact them, uh, either on pension or medical, I try to keep up with the most current information, but as far as. What they do, a lot of them will disclose it because they're proud of the fact they're, they've got another job or don't. They want to just retire and spend time in another state or with the family, that's totally a personal decision for each of them. Back to Jeff's point about the, the Orange Police, he is, I believe, correct about, he was negotiating when Orange. Uh, went to a four oh one way back in the year two thousand, the police, the current police officers who retired after two thousand. And only those after two thousand, uh, you did and still do receive a two percent annualized uh, cost of living adjustment. Uh, but to be fair, when the um, current police officers, uh, who are now in the four oh one, when that negotiation came up. Around two thousand fourteen, that was also the time that the police office, the current police officers, uh, negotiated a two point two five percent. Um, multiplier from two percent on their, on their uh, their pensions, which significantly increased their, their initial pension. Regardless of the call. Uh, so I mean, you know, it's give and take in every negotiation. Sue, to be honest with you, the town has not. Um, gone into negotiations looking to remove that paragraph. It's been there, it's kind of a, you know, been there forever kind of thing, not one that we've, we've touched. Um, and, you know, uh, you know, yes, there's a quote-unquote lockout, if you will, about discussing pension until the year twenty twenty four. It was a ten-year uh, lockout that was agreed to in the negotiations, that was put forth. Pretty much by the officers who felt they didn't want to see things degrading any further uh, from the town, uh, increased. Contribution rates or anything else, and so, uh, as part of the overall negotiations, that was agreed to. And that's why we are what we are, so, so the last couple of negotiations, there's would have been no discussion. Of pension whatsoever based on that agreed to, uh, lockout for ten years.
Alright, thank you.
To Susan's point about this annual or semi-annual. Uh, uncomfortable conversation, what options do we have going for, we have to make a decision. About what's on the table now, but what options do we have going forward to either, you know. Set some precedent or set something, or whatever, I mean, is it reopening, uh? It's not reopening the contract, but.
Well, the next contract negotiations will be after that lockout period, if the town at that time feels there's.
So we have no options between now and twenty twenty four to set up some procedure to avoid this conversation.
Correct. I mean, you said to.
We could establish a policy, this board could establish the policy and, and grant something. Um, and what is your reaction then to Susan's point about not necessarily having to do it for all of the years?
I don't know, I'm not a retiree, I don't know how the other, I'm sure the other retirees would not feel, um, very. Very, very, very happy about that, especially because the average, I don't have it in front of me, but I know the average, um. You know, retiree pension for those folks are as much less than what the police is, and so they could make the same. You know, you have somebody here, sitting here from the town retirees making the same point and coming, coming back to you.
Of course, I could appreciate that, you know, the retirees' perspective.
Yeah.
What about Susan's perspective that, you know, it's not necessarily apples to apples?
It's not apples to apples because you have, you have one contract that does call it out. You also have a precedent. Which you can always change, that whenever, to my knowledge. Uh, in my research, way, way back before I was here, it seems that every time a cola was granted to the police retirement fund. The same amendments to the, the, the pension plans were made to the. Non-certified board of that, as well as the town employees pension plans. So if there was, so if there was a five percent, sort of, there was a five percent or a ten percent cost of living adjustment, it was, the, the change was made across the board. So, you know, no, there has not, as has been well documented, there's not been any cost of living adjustment since two thousand eight, but it's been none for all three. And so it, you could, you have the discretion, obviously. It's your call. But I mean, you know, it depends on how you feel about your other retirees out there, whether you feel it's fair to, you know, do for one group, not the other, whether you're fair, feel it's fair, as Sue was suggesting, to, to pick a, a, an age, or a date of retirement, or an amount somebody makes. I mean, that's, that's really, you know, getting into the weeds, but it's also gonna be, where, where do you draw the lines?
That's the struggle I have now. I mean, here we are in a negotiation, really, of, of something that we have a pension committee for. I mean, you know, maybe our message, you know, is to send this back to pension committee, to, to come up with a plan so that we're not having this discussion, you know. I, I don't know, reopening or a policy decision or something, but I, I don't feel that, you know, I don't want to micromanage them and, and you know, those are the individuals that, you know, have to address the numbers. I mean, the impact on the taxpayer, like I can appreciate the impact on retirees. Struggle with the, you know, the, the point that it hasn't changed so many years. But I also, you know, taxpayers are gonna put the bill, you know.
So that's, that's what the Millman report is, is provided for you. And, and that's by, I think by law, anytime there's an adjustment made to, and this would, this would create a plan amendment. Anytime there's an amendment to a pension plan, we have to get an actuarial study done. So this is a natural, you know, if you.
What do you do with the studies, my point? And, and you know, I, I think that's what we have a pension committee for, and I can appreciate their recommendation here. And it's probably based on more of what's happening in, in the market, in, in the, in the fund. But I do think it's their responsibility. We should respect their decision, but I, I think sending a message back to them that, to Susan's point, this is, you know, we gotta find a path forward for both retirees and for the taxpayers. And, and this annual negotiation is just inappropriate.
So this is one point that you make about, you know, first of all, you, you have the minutes of the, of the pension committee. I might read them for you. But the discussion you, you brought up and Sue has indicated about trying to parse the pension, cost of living adjustment, we'll discuss, not this time. It might have been brought up in passing. There was an extensive discussion, if it wasn't two years ago, maybe four years ago, about, and there was a back and forth about, you know, and that was, the problem was, where do you draw the line? Because if you say somebody retired before nineteen ninety and the person retired in nineteen ninety-one.
Point I'm trying to make is, this is not the forum to have that in-depth conversation.
When they had that conversation, they came up with, it's, they, they didn't, they didn't want to make that decision.
They didn't want to, but you know, that's their job.
Well, their job came back to say, we should, we feel it's good or nothing. In this case, it was nothing.
This time, okay, and, and I can appreciate, you know, the why for of this time or that time. But, you know, we got, you know, it's gotta be a longer-term fix for this. And, you know, I, I can appreciate the retirees' position. You know, they, they make a lot of valid arguments and it's been a long time, but,
it's an incredibly sympathetic group. And, and as you say, making good arguments, but it's balanced by the impact on the town, which is why it lands in this conference room. It makes it hard, but back to the Mitch, you were, sorry, I think it's your form. Maybe it was Millman. It's labeled Mitch. So the proposed change number two, just to the police grid. And just the, the, I presume the proposed change number two is what happens at sixty percent? And so that's a hundred and one thousand dollars per year that would add on to the budget over the, essentially, over twenty years, drops off on the backend, presuming that's just the actuarially impact on lives.
I'm not sure, but you have the very.
Supposed.
Yes, it's just, that's the hard, hard calculation of, of an actuary, right? Yeah, I mean, the problem, the thing that concerned me, like at one level, I'm thinking to myself, one hundred one thousand dollars, it's not a catastrophe. I mean, you can figure out a way to absorb that. The problem is, we've been visiting it every two years. Facing the same dilemma, like in two years from now. Pressure's gonna be just as bad. So one time doesn't seem insurmountable, but it's the, it's the cumulative effect. If, if it kept happening, it would be, which is why over thirty-five years or forty years now in this country, there's been such an assault on pensions for business, and from, from all sides, right? I mean, a lot of people sort of came to the conclusion that, that society, we're not gonna do that. Municipal pensions and police.
The new accounting practice and everything, you gotta, gotta be part of the calculation. Gotta refund and.
Gotcha.
And that's the reality. And that's why, you know, the, the hard decisions on both sides of this, lie with this board. But, you know, we do have these committees set up and they're supposed to get into the weeds and get a fix and.
Yeah, I, not to, not to argue with you, Charles, but the pension committee has a very, very limited, end charge. Pete and I have actually had this conversation because the very thought of having the pension committee in its, pay process, right, is one that we can't find any substantiation for in the creation of the pension committee. So it, I, I'm not sure we're gonna be able to punt it to them, quite honest with you.
Well, I can appreciate that, that, you know, we're not asking them, we, we probably have not asked them or directed them to make the philosophical decisions, just to manage the dollars of it. I think that's probably where you go and, and I can appreciate that. But if that's the case, then, I, as a member of this board, to lose point, there's a lot of information here that's gotta be digested. That's something you just do in a half hour meeting.
So, to, to that point, Lou had actually said something similar earlier. Do we want to table this at this, at this point while we gather more information and possibly do a workshop, specific for this issue as a board?
Yeah, I think that, you know, to Susan's point, you know, this has got to get resolved and, just whether it be a policy decision or something, but this, this is just going on too long. You know, both from the retirees' perspective and the town's perspective, gotta find an answer.
I like that, I guess. I mean, I think a motion to table it so we can gather more information and make a potentially longer-term decision.
So before, before you make a motion to table specifically. Before you do, say, before you, and it's not debatable, what information in particular that you don't already have, are you looking for? Because I'm sure.
Well, that's what we got to get. Yeah, they're in a workshop or something to figure out. Well, I don't have all my questions lined up. But I know there's a lot more. I think you start by having a discussion with the pension committee and what do they know that we don't know?
To my, I'd be interested in the information I mentioned, which is without having names associated. Interested in the spreadsheet showing what the benefits amount, what the benefit amounts are, date of retirement and the age of the person at this moment. Not having names makes it a lot cleaner, a lot easier to digest raw data.
Yep. And I, and I'd like to know from the perspective of the group of retirees, what might be acceptable in terms of, you know, sort of parsing out da- date of birth, date of retirement, something like that, that might sort of get us to a compromise. I'd also like to see, and I, I think this may just be extrapolation, but if we chose a percentage that was not, you know, a hundred percent or sixty percent, if we chose a lesser percent, what that would do to the numbers.
And, and there's nothing to suggest that we couldn't establish a policy that said, there's a recurring COLA adjustment, for the next couple of years. You know, we could do, you know, one of the, what if some of these are one percent, two percent, three percent. And those are, and those are apparently built into some form of contractual obligation, right? So we could, we could mirror that even without the contract. I think we have.
That's right. I think we had, I could be too and see what we can do.
All right, so we'll schedule, we'll schedule a workshop. Jeff?
Can I just make one comment? Just regarding what we're talking about here. And I'll go back to two years ago. There is a part of that language in the contract, is, and this is my personal opinion and just some of the retirees, that it, it's been this year, it was three months. We, we lost three months at the pension board. Which if you read the language, they're not even really part of the process. Their part of this language is to, you know, ask for the report, which Mitch has done as long as I've known, ask for the report, report comes to the selectmen, the selectmen reviews it, maybe they, they get their report, the Q and A to Billman and makes a decision. This started in April. April, they didn't have a quorum. May, they tabled it. June, we're now past the ninety-day limit, to make a decision. The report came out April twelfth, we're July eighteenth. Two years ago, I asked for this to be, because it was the whole, it was COVID, it was, you know, everything was going on. And we had a letter from the union, we asked to be, to postpone it. And basically, the select board said, no, we gotta make a decision within ninety days and they denied us. So here we are, two years later, saying, oh, let's get a committee together and all this stuff. I just think it's at this point. It's ninety days, it's really, it's going off the tracks at the pension committee. Again, this is, this is me talking. And if you look at, I know what you're saying, Charlie, but if you look at the, the makeup of that board, I mean, that's not the most glorified board. And I've, I've gone back and looked at the minutes over the year. There's, it's very unusual to even have the same people on the board. That, there's a big turnover. So the people that made a recommendation a month ago, may not have been around. I mean, the, the one guy that had most of the questions, this was his first meeting. You know, he, he was brand new, had, you know, really no history of anything. So, you know, the people that made comments, you know, the pension board in two thousand ten, two thousand twelve, two thousand fourteen and so on, it's not the same people. It's not as cohesive as a lot of the, like the Board of Finance, for, for example, there, there's a lot of consistency there where people are, there on, you know, multiple years so that this whole, hey, this is, you know, what they, you know, they're charged, so to speak, where, it, it almost seems like when you read, the minutes are very, even those minutes, and if you watch the tape, it's, it's a whole different thing. A lot of the discussion that came out and if you listen to the tape, it's not in, in print, so.
Well, I mean, that's the Matt's point, you know, I think we've already had basic consensus here that we're not going to punch it back to them, but by the same token, they do have some responsibility to do some of the research and that type of thing, even if it's just a numbers thing. That part of it is part of the calculation because there is an impact on the taxpayer. So that part, I would, you know, I understand.
It's a, to, to just point, and I clearly understand your frustration with the inflation pace that governmental activities take place at. But I don't think you want to demand a vote today on whether we do this or not.
I'm, I'm not demanding. I'm just making a point of. It worked the other way two years ago, that we had to vote because we were closing in on the ninety days. Now all of a sudden, it's not a big deal.
Again, what's the ninety-day provision, Mitch?
Well, it says in the, it, once again, this is from the police contracts, the board of selectmen shall vote, on any such proposed adjustment within ninety days from the date of its receipt of the report from the actuary.
So we can get another report from an actuary.
Well, with this, to Jeff, to Jeff's point, he is correct. Your original, original, report from the actuary, I think was dated in April. All right, but that's been pushed aside. I only, I didn't want to confuse you anymore. You are confused. And only gave you the one from June ninth because the, it was the pension committee, that requested a breakdown, which the first report did not have, by the different groups. So, Milliman, Jen Castellano from Milliman, went back to the drawing board and came up with a more, much more detailed report than in June ninth. So you could say you're within ninety days of June, you're not within ninety days of the April report, you are within ninety days of the June report, which by the way, was then looked at on June fifteenth by the, by the pension committee. So, you know, once again, the report for the actuary, there are two of them now. So the first one, you're outside the ninety days, the second one, you're still within. So it's. And Pete's listening intently.
So, all right, so at this point, there's other information that the folks would like to have at their disposal when we convene on this topic as a, in a workshop fashion. Please, for the launch of Mitch, you know, you can take some notes and I take some.
Well, I, I definitely want, I definitely put together a spreadsheet, if you will, from, from our records, you know, of the, for the, for the police, of the current benefit, the age of the individual and the date of retirement of the individual.
And just, yeah, thank you. Just to, go back to a point that was made earlier a couple of times, and that's the lumping in of police and the other two at the same time. And I know the folks have expressed their sentiments, and I might as well add mine to that list. And owing to the fact that the retirement package that the police department has negotiated, is substantially healthier than the other two. I have long thought that there was, there needed to be some level of equity in how we treat our retired employees. So my own personal perspective, and that's why I think I've always framed this in terms of, we need to look at everybody, is that unfortunately, the less advantaged continue to have less advantages. If we only, you know, take a look at one, it doesn't mean I am, you know, not willing to do, you know, anything, one or, or, or two or three. But I think that should be part of the overall discussion because that's more a philosophical approach. So, just wanted that to clarify.
And Mitch, to just make, to that very point there, the charts that you have prepared here, are, that are attached to the Millman letters, excuse me.
It's, it's not prepared by me, that's prepared by Mill.
I keep saying Mitch.
I provided them to you, but I didn't, I didn't put them together. I will put together the next one.
They're very helpful. So it's, there's the county employees' pension plan, that's here of works.
Not public, public works is, is, is a Teamsters plan. They're totally separate, but that includes, basically all other, other full-time employees other than police and the Teamsters.
What about fire?
Fires included in that. Fire, the fires.
Included in this town and the town.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what, that's my question. So that, that first chart includes fire.
Well, this says town employees includes fire, dispatchers, GEA, Guilford Employee Association.
Great.
Guilford Supervisor Association and the contracted individuals.
And for those familiar with some of the negotiations with the fire department, it's, it's around the corner, that they're gonna ask for the same benefits they already have, consistently have. And one can certainly understand that they make a similar contention about, the danger that they face in their everyday lives and work too. So let's not forget that this probably won't be the last time we hear about it.
Okay, to your point about the other, I mean, you know, we're community and just.
Okay. Thanks, Mitch.
Thank you.
Jeff, thanks for your interactions.
So I'm, so this is your workshop?
Yeah, we're gonna pull some together. But we'll, we'll, we'll clue you, we'll.
It would be a workshop and then it will come back to. End of the workshop.
Okay, I need to discuss, take possible action on an ordinance to amend the town code in the town of Guilford, chapter two away noise and an ordinance to regulate ATV and other motorized vehicles. Let's take these one at a time. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance to amend the town code in Guilford, chapter two away noise? Is there a second?
Well, I'm happy to second, but I, I am impressed with Sue's question about exempting, lawn mowing specifically. Boy, I could make a distinction during a lawnmower and a leaf mower.
Right. I, I'm, I'm comfortable taking out the lawn equipment.
I would, I would explicitly say lawn mower.
Oh, well. Trying, trying to find that. Where exactly is that?
So, I think it was the number four.
Number three, number three.
Sorry, there you go.
So, so if we were to strike lawn and garden tools. So, so if we were to strike lawn and garden tools?
So leave it as an exemption with no exception in the exemption.
Yep.
Well, yeah.
Pete, does that pass muster?
I, I'm sorry, a alarm just went off for me, so I couldn't quite hear you. Uh, I have a doctor's appointment in a half hour.
How many death spells was it?
Lawyers, guns and money. All right, so the, uh, so not to be, uh, short on that, but the domestic power equipment, so, you know, you could do a couple of things, you could approve the pro, proposed amendment uh, with respect to, um, section E as to paragraphs one and five only. Or, you know, you could try to preserve it for some domestic power equipment, but not others, but that's going to get a little dicey there, uh, to Sue's point, lawnmower, now do we take out weed whacker and, you know, leaf blower, um, so and let me just tell you something too about, um, noise ordinances in general, they have to be approved by, uh, DEEP. And they, in that particular agency are very, um, um, they like to see noise restrictions, the more, the better, so if we were to go forward with any part of this, it's harder to undo it, once we do it, uh, it's hard to get approval for increasing noise than it is, uh, to change an ordinance that's going to restrict noise, so the reason I'm saying that is, if we have any, if we're going to have any second thoughts, if we're going to pass this, or you're going to pass this as respect to domestic power equipment, and then we think, oh gee, we went a little too far, and now we want to back it up a little bit.
Right.
That could be difficult.
So, so that suggests taking that whole section out of domestic power equipment.
Yeah.
And, and leave the exception in the original, right?
Yes, yes.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and it isn't as if, you know, the police are going to be going around measuring, you know, it's going to be based on someone's complaint.
Right.
You know, and they, this is just giving them some horsepower to deal with a complaint, so.
And actually, as you, you know, as you guys were talking about this earlier, I think one of the multitasks I do is all, like, I jumped on the phone with Butch, or I, I'll contact Chris Hodgson on some of these other issues. And so the chief basically said, th- these are very hard to enforce anyway. Lawnmowers moving around, a- and you don't have a stable, um, noise pattern that you can measure, and there's a question of how far away, so, um, you know, certainly, that's, that's, doesn't strike me, and it's up to you folks, doesn't strike, to me, is a very important part of this ordinance change.
But would stay in place for after ten, ten's the hard cutoff that they stand now.
Which, so, so we're going to, we're going to strike the changes to section three.
Yeah, I think what your motion would be, if you wanted to, um, modify it, would be to appro, appro, approve the proposed amendment to the noise ordinance with respect to section two oh eight five E exemptions as to paragraph one and five only.
I'll make that motion.
Look, Lou just made that motion.
Second that.
Any further comments or discussion? Here, now let me try your minds, select woman, Renner.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimously, thanks. Uh, the next up is an ordinance to regulate all touring vehicles and other motorized recreational vehicles, is there a motion?
Uh.
For purposes discussion.
Yeah, I'll move it.
And I'm second, second, sorry, so, okay. Um, comments or questions, you know, we, we, in, in the earlier discussion, we talked about moving on this and then doing something subsequent with regard to pickup trucks and registered vehicles.
Yeah.
Does that still make sense?
I think it does.
Yeah, I think it does.
But it's definitely a risk and it would be really damaging to have a full-size, you know, motor vehicle.
Yeah.
In these trails.
Yeah, we, we caught my eye was that the, the penalties for a registered vehicle appear to be generally less than what we're proposing here, so I certainly want to bring them up to at least this.
The same, the same, and it's a separate, right, functions.
I, uh, if you like, uh, you know, I could, we could do a little research on that front, I just want to throw this out there for your general consideration at that point, is, is, you know, registered motor vehicles by the very term of it, they, they're regulated, they're registered with the state, they're heavily regulated by state law. And you, you know, we've been down this road occasionally, not often, where there's a question about preemption, uh, when state law enters a field and regulates it strictly, how much can the town then supplement that and go beyond what the state has, state regulations have provided, so, so here, um, we have specific, and Tom could, you, you know, answer questions on this, but we do have specific enabling statute by, by the legislature which said, uh, towns are empowered to make their own ordinances around ATVs and dirt bikes, very specific statutes, and they, they, they do not include doing the same for registered motor vehicles, so we would have to determine whether or not we have general municipal authority to regulate in that field, and I have to tell you, i- i- I'm not sure that we do, but we could research that.
So, so two things, I'm hearing you say, doesn't make sense to try and fold it into this ordinance, number one. Number two, I think it was mentioned, somebody brings a four-wheel drive Jeep, pickup Jeep, um, into one of these trails, they're trespassing. And they're potentially violating other state statutes.
Statutes, and that's a litigation issue, and.
Well, the fines can be litigated too.
Right, but they're nowhere near what these fines are.
Right. These are serious.
Well, I, I don't know what the fines are.
First offense.
I got it.
The first offense is going to get thrown out of court.
So I'm curious, what would happen if somebody, I think, then a chase high is on, what would happen if you found the, the, the truck driving up the trail on the Timberlands?
First time trespass, it won't even get through court, won't even get to court.
I, I, I don't know if that's the case, Charlie, yeah, are you talking about a registered motor vehicle trespassing on somebody's property?
Yes.
Particularly on, particularly on the trails, I, I talked to Pete about this earlier, particularly on the trails, if somebody's in a registered vehicle, trespassing and criminal mischief are right off the top, are two charges that would be, uh, added, uh, you know, depending on what kind of damage they've done there, whether they've damaged a gate or other entry area, or done damage to the trail itself, ruts, things like that. So those two charges would automatically come into play, some of the things that we consider, particularly when we're looking at the, the statute is, uh, I think we need to remember, a lot of times, uh, the people that are riding these dirt bikes and ATVs, and not always, but m- most of the time are juveniles or young adults, uh, and a lot of times, they don't have the ability to have a registered vehicle, they're driving these unregistered vehicles in those areas, uh, you know, and with, with no driver's license or, or no vehicle registered to them. So, uh, you know, we would take the registered vehicles and those would automatically go to court, and, uh, you know, now you've got a situation where somebody would have to fight that in court, certainly fines could be, uh, levied, and even in this case, uh, if fines are levied at the town level on the ordinance, people still have the ability to challenge that, fight that, uh, that, uh, that charge with the town.
Yeah. All right, so I, I think it makes sense, I'm going to move this one forward, Pete's going to do the legal research to determine what kind of authority we have to regulate, uh, registered vehicles, on the same type of property additionally, so, um, so that we're not, uh, violating state statutes. Um, okay, so, uh, moved, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Let me try your minds, select woman, Renner.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously, thanks Pete, and thanks Tom.
You're welcome.
Your work on it. Uh, I'm not, consider to take possible action on a resolution for a sustainable materials management grant from the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. Uh, as a little way of background, I can see we secured a grant uh, of eighty-three thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars from D E P. Actually, this is part of our South Central Regional Council of Governments, uh, and, uh, initiative on uh, a couple of things, pay as you throw and food waste diversion. This is specific for a food waste diversion program where they, we will identify a hauler, uh, who will come and take away, uh, food waste, people will, uh, people will have the opportunity to sign up with this hauler, where you can segment your food waste from your regular garbage, um, at no cost to the town, um, so this is, uh, Pete and I talked about this, uh, it has been suggested to us that we, uh, you know, just pass a resolution in support of this, um, so uh, any comments or questions?
I'm, I'm, I'm smiling because this just circles back to, I mean, when I was, the proverbial, when I was a kid story, you know, we lived in a row house in the city, and they, literally, the South Jersey pig farmers would come drive it through and collect your buckets of, of food waste, it was incredible, it was incredibly efficient, is what it was.
Right.
My boy just moved Brooklyn and they require all of this.
Well, you separate everything, and it all got to be spelled out.
The numbers are staggering that they're passing around, that forty percent of solid waste is related to food waste. Because it, it's moist and it absorbs moisture, so, um, just the, you know, taking a significant part of, uh, that out of play. These materials wind up at, uh, the facility in Sullivan, um, where they are processing, uh, the food waste diversion, turn it into energy, uh, quantum biophysics, is the out, is the outfit.
Oh, the food is used for that purpose, right?
Interesting, yeah.
Do, do we know how it's processed? I'm just curious, what happens?
No, I, I, I missed that chapter in my science class, um. I, I, I don't, there's a, there, there's a, it really, take a look at this outfit called Quantum Biophysics in Sullivan, so.
Okay. All right, good.
Wow.
Good.
So. Motion to approve the resolution.
I'd like to make that motion.
A second, and any further comments or questions?
Just bears repeating, it's a, it's a hundred percent grant by DEEP, we don't have much to, and it makes sense to head this way and educate voters.
And for those of us whose memories are still, if you have DEEP giving us money for a change, it's a little different than where we were, it's some time ago. Uh, yeah. Uh, you careful, so let me try your minds, uh, select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
Uh, that motion carries unanimously. Okay, um. Item ten. Discuss to take possible action on noise control variance application for the New England Taco Festival taking place July thirtieth, thirty-first at the agricultural, uh, fairgrounds, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve that request for variance.
Uh, so, second, any comments or questions? Let me try your minds, select woman, uh, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, that motion carries, uh, item eleven.
Wait, did five to seven thousand people?
Oh, that was, was crazy last year. Place was, that parking lot was as packed as, uh, as any other one of the fair day.
Well, yeah, impressive.
Really is. Um. Okay. Um, considering to take, uh, possible action or proclamation declaring August sixth, twenty twenty-two as National Purple Heart Day in the town of Guilford, Larry?
You were saying.
But, August sixth.
Seven.
Seventh, okay, August seventh. Larry, you've been patiently sitting here, who's, who's getting lunch ready?
No, it's been interesting.
Good or bad?
Every taxes on three houses, so I mean, I'm interested in what you have.
There you go.
It's, it's deliberate, that, I don't. Very good. I'm informed.
Well, it's good to see you. Okay, um. Yeah, we're at the, uh, consider to take possible action or proclamation declaring order seven, twenty twenty-two as National Purple Heart Day in Guilford, Larry, you want to talk a little bit about this?
It's, um, yeah, just nationally, they, they, uh, it's been a national holiday for, uh, for a few years, and I just thought I'd bring it out to, you know, you don't hear much about it. Um, but, um, it's, uh, yeah, it's honor Purple Heart recipients, mainly for that, people, of course, Purple Heart's given not only to um, people that, uh, are living, but there's also people that have given their life and service to also. So there, that's it, there's a, there's a, you know, there's a Purple Heart organization like the Veterans of Foreign Wars or the American Legion, um, that was first established in Ansonia, that's by an act of Congress, it is a, uh, veterans, considered a veterans' organization, military order of Purple Heart, uh. There's a ceremony, it was originally, yeah, originally established in Ansonia, which there's a, uh, celebration there for that, uh, this, uh, Sat- Saturday, I believe, and as I'm going to be representing the town there, I expect that letter on. So that's just a way to get people out there to know that, uh, it's another, another day like Veterans Day or anything that you want to go out there and thank your veterans and, and honor, there's a lot of Purple Heart recipients, a lot of people that wounded and, and all our past wars that lived here in Guilford, it's a way of, you know, recognizing them, letting them know that, um, that, you know, we're thinking about.
Do we have a list of Purple Heart recipients here in town, is there any way to get that kind of information, because, you know, it'd be nice to send them, send them a notification, I'm sure you, you're going to get the work.
Yeah, I, I know a lot of people, I don't know unless people, till years ago, I could tell you. You know, because the town was obviously smaller and the, that, you know, nowadays, I, I don't really know, I, I meet people all the time that, that served overseas and that were wounded and, so, but no, I do not have a list of them. There is a registry, there's a Purple Heart museum, which I visited, um, two weeks ago, it's in Newark. The town in Newark, it's, uh, I don't remember, I think it's at Windsor's, and it's a Purple Heart museum, it has all, it's a registry, it's a nice museum, they have a lot of artifacts and in there, but also you can register, um, your name there as a Purple Heart recipient, like I have, I'm sending an article of the original shoreline newspaper article when I was wounded, and, um, uh, but you send that, your name, and so you can go there and find out who they are.
Okay.
So there's a lot of, a lot of things like that going on, but I'm trying to just make a little more awareness of it in town. We have a, I purchased a Purple Heart flag, and also, um, I don't, I don't know if you have any objection to that, but I figured underneath the American flag probably, uh, switch the, uh, P O W flag for a week or so prior to that, we'll fly that underneath the American.
That, that's excellent. And that, uh, as you know, we've been flying the Ukrainian flag.
Yes, right, yeah.
So, we can certainly put this up for a week's time.
Yeah, just, just a week before, let's see if I can get it, I'd like to see if we can get maybe an article in the, the, uh, the paper or something.
Ben, Ben Renner from the Gilbert Courier is, uh, on this call, so. Yeah, Ben, Ben is, uh, he's down the right hand corner there.
Yeah.
So.
Maybe, maybe, uh, Ben, if we could get something in the paper, maybe giraffes with the proclamation and, and some, some article, um, that would be good.
Definitely that can be done, and is this Larry speaking now?
Yes, it is.
Um, would it be possible to give me some contact, you feel comfortable giving me a phone number over this platform or?
Well, everybody, my class, the ones, class is all over town, you, oh. Would you like to give it to me now, or you?
I- if, if I can get a contact, that would be great.
Then I'll, but I'll get, I'll work on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um, there's a motion, uh, on the table, um. Let me try your minds, select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries, Larry, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, and, uh, you let me know about the, uh, uh, the newspaper and all.
Yeah, I'm good, I, I, what I'll do is, what I usually do is I'll throw an email together introducing the two of you and throw phone numbers, because I have cell phone numbers for both of you, so.
Yeah.
We'll do that a little bit later.
Okay.
Thanks. Hey, lunch going to be late today?
What? What lunch?
Meals on Wheels.
No, they can send out. No, they're all set.
There you go, it's a well-oiled machine over there, right? Uh, okay, uh, appointments and resignations. Uh, well, what's that, Mr. Collins? Yes, well, that one, act on a recommendation or point, Peter Collins, an alternate to the Marina Commission to fill a vacancy for term to expire, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, is there a motion?
I'll make it so.
Uh, a second? I'll second it, uh, yeah, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I'm just, just wondering, um, the agenda states to act on a recommendation, where was the recommendation from?
Trace?
I, there was an, I got an email from Tim Donlin from the Republican Town.
I there was an, I got an email from Tim Donlin from the Republican Town Committee. I thought I included in your board pack.
Oh, I apologize if I didn't. No, no, no.
I can send it out to you. I'm sorry. I thought I included it. It came from the Republican Town Committee.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, take a look at his experience, Guilford youth mentor for twenty-six years, Duck Island Yacht condominium founder and Duck Island Yacht Club Commodore, so.
Good. Thirty-eight-year resident?
Yes.
Yeah. Great.
The, is there much?
I made it.
You made it, that's right. Let me try your minds, select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Okay. Item thirteen, request for use of town property, thirteen dot one, act on a request on the Guilford Agricultural Commission to use the green to place a sign on the green advertising its unveiling of the new farm brochure, taking place August twentieth, twenty twenty-two, raid date, August twenty-one, signed placement eight, six to eight twenty. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Now, let me try your minds, select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, aye. That motion carries unanimously. Thirteen dot two, act on a request to place a donated bench on the green with an attached plaque honoring Carl Ballast Tracy. Linda, thank you for your patience.
You should have provided coffee. So may I say something?
Absolutely.
I I don't want to. First of all, I want to thank you for putting this on your agenda, but I also want to thank Ben Rayner, whom I spoke to over the phone, for not putting my name in that article on the front page, because I specifically told him, do not put my name. There was never the intention that this become a townwide issue. It was, I thought, a valid request to the Green Committee back in September simply for a plaque on a bench that's already there that has nothing. And I was told they changed their policy. And then in May, I wrote first select man Hoya letter listing all the reasons that Carl Ballast Tracy deserves the plaque, the small plaque, three by eight inches on on a bench. So that's what I have to say.
Got it.
I'd like to move this if nobody else is.
Yeah, I'd, yeah. You want to move it?
Absolutely.
I'll second. Linda, thank you for that clarification, and we all hold Carl in very high esteem for what he did in this community. And I'm wholly supportive of this, but I wanted to make some clarifications here. The Green Committee came back and said, this is inconsistent with what what they do or their policy. However, Pete and I have had this conversation. Subject to existing policies, laws, and regulations, the board of selectmen may consider donor requests to place a small donor recognition plaque on donations, the size of donor recognition recognition plaque shall be determined by the board of selectmen at its in its sole discretion. And you had provided an example of what the plaque was gonna read. And I took the opportunity last Friday to walk around the green, and then I think your packet includes the pictures I took of other individuals who have been honored with plaques. And and the donation that's being made by the Ballast Tracy family is one of the new benches that's already scheduled to go on to the green that we had approved through the use of our funds. So this is not a new structure or edifice or, you know, or monument. This is one of the benches that has been approved by this committee, by this board, as well as the committee to go on the green. So I I'm fully supportive of it.
And I can certainly see the consistency of recognizing unused lifetime of public service to be acknowledged in this way in this public space.
Great. I am completely, I mean, Carl was a great colleague for many years, and I remember I had to do some research about plaques and things on the greens. As a matter of fact, I think in Carl's possession at some point in time was a lot of plaques. But anyway, there's no question that there's there's a number of others there, whatever precedent was said to me. I would supersede Carl's efforts throughout the years. Fully support this.
All right. So you're you're on board? Good.
Absolutely.
All right, let me try your minds, select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Linda, thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you very much.
Well. You're welcome. It's good to do the right thing. All right, item fourteen, committee reports. I don't think we have any at this point. Correspondence.
A little standard, it was real quick. The building permits is thirty on in a year that just felt like there was furious amount of activity.
Those are those are.
Those are new home, new home destruction. And I recognize we're getting to a point probably faster than than it was thinking. I mean, somewhere long way when we're on the Board of Finance, we had a projection of the remaining building lots, and it was shockingly close, decade, short decade, it's not a century, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But even the building lots have to use it now or stretch, but I think it's a reflection of materials and that type of thing, too.
Well, it'll be interesting to see what happens in the next two or three years as these multi-unit properties, or they, would that be one permit? So that number might be a little, might be a little, not necessarily change, whereas there's gonna be a hundred units on Hundred Hubbard Road is a one, that's one permit.
Okay. Which is maybe two, because there are two separate structures.
I mean, you're.
Trace, we'll go back and check with the building department to clarify specifically that this is freestanding household structures, right? Good.
Sure. Okay. So sorry to go off on that.
Quite all right. tangent. All right. All right. Old business? New business? Public forum? Anyone wishing to address the board in public forum?
Clear everybody out.
All right. Item nineteen, discuss to take possible action on appeal from residents according to section two forty-seven thirty-one, right of appeal, articles seven, elderly tax relief program. An executive session may be required, will be required. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second, let me try your minds, select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Let's take a health break.
Yeah, take a little break as well.
Yeah. I had a second. Um, there were executive session, there were no motions made, no action taken. Seeing there's no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, second. Try your minds, select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good meeting.
Sue, can I just throw out like a a completely kibitzing suggestion?